Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, June thirteenth. It is great to see a large crowd here and to have everybody participate. And we have fifty-five people online as well. So it's a nice, nice crowd. In compliance with state law, city council, regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, I'm calling this meeting to order. And Chris, if you could please call the roll.
I am here.
Member Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsock.
Here.
Councilmember Hardjhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a quorum here.
Thank you, Chris. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance, into the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Next up is approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Look for approval of the agenda.
Some moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Got a nice ringtone. I'm being searched. So tonight, we have before us a presentation by King Fisher for the battery energy storage system that is being proposed for outside the Covington city limits just to the north of our city. We've asked King Fisher to be here to give the presentation so that our residents can hear what is being proposed. And I am thankful that you are all here to hear what this presentation is. And thank you to everybody online who's taken the time as well to listen to this.
Yeah, so there's still more seats. Yeah.
There's still seats up here.
Yeah.
Just this proposal, like I said, is for outside. It is being run and reviewed by King County Planning Department. And after this presentation, if we will have a public comment, but also if there's any questions and stuff, everything is run through King County on this proposal. They are overseeing what if anything that goes on with this. And for those that don't know, this proposal, I believe, is right north of the Mattson Junior High off of one sixty-fourth. And with that, I would like to introduce King Fisher to give the presentation on the battery energy storage system. Who is here to do that? Welcome.
There's a slide advanced. There's a slide advanced on the left.
I don't think this is the right. Is that the right slide deck? No. Yeah, that's not the right slide deck. I can talk about that one. Yeah.
There's four more seats up in the front if anybody wants to have a seat, especially the other child maybe.
Four in the front row and one in the second row.
Krista, can you make sure it's just because we may have a lot of public comment, I would prefer not to see this online. I'm sorry, but it keeps like it seems to be at the base.
I'll try to talk loudly.
So first, I want to say thank you for having us. I've had the opportunity to meet with a few of the council members and brief them on the project. And we appreciate that this is an important part of our project outreach and our stakeholder outreach. So this is all part of the process. It's been about a year now since we've started our outreach process. And we're continuing to work through and get feedback. So we really appreciate having the opportunity to participate in that with you tonight. For those of that aren't familiar, just a brief introduction of who Tanaska is. It's a now thirty-six-year-old IPP or independent power producer based in Omaha. Tanaska has twenty-three gigawatts of renewables in development in their development pipeline. And being a responsible and engaged and a community partner is very important to Tanaska in the communities that they develop it. Their reputation is very important for that. My name is Tommy Nelson. I'm the developer on the project. With Tanaska, I'm responsible for the kind of boots-on-the-ground development. And also here with me, I have Robert Steele from Hiller Companies. They are the premier fire safety consultants. They are engaged in over now two hundred-plus battery storage sites representing about twelve gigawatts of battery storage projects. Again, you know, we very much care deeply about the communities that we develop. And that's part of why we're here is our initial outreach has kind of progressed from briefings into design phase of the project and trying to incorporate feedback into that design as it progresses. We reached out to Covington and, you know, that's how we got here. So what I'd like to kind of start with in the presentation is establishing kind of what the why, why we, why are we here? What's the project need? A little bit about the technology, kind of an overview of that, especially for those that haven't had a briefing on it yet. And then an overview of the project itself as we're proposing it and how that's kind of evolved over time. And then any questions that the council has for me or for Robert? Happy to entertain those. Head to the next one. So a little bit about the project need. Why are we here? Why is this project here now? I'm sure you're all familiar with CETA, the Clean Energy Transformation Act. It requires the state's electric supply to be free of carbon by twenty forty-five. And as part of compliance with that, utilities are seeking capacity of about five-point-three gigawatt hours by twenty thirty, and then another thirteen and a half by twenty forty-five, which is a great deal of power. So this is a little bit hard to read the graph, but for those that can either have seen this up close or can generally understand those kind of diverging dotted and the solid diverging lines, what this slide is showing is the that CETA compliance or compliance with the Clean Energy Transformation Act is creating a divergence between eligible supply and customer demand. What supply complies with CETA and the demand of the customer that keeps increasing. Important to note that even with conservation, and that's the delta between the dotted line and the solid line, the unmet energy shortfall grows from about fifty percent to about two hundred percent of current eligible resources. That's just with conservation. PSC in particular will have to vigorously pursue a mix of options, including generation, conservation, E R distributed energy resources to meet CETA by twenty thirty, and then again in twenty forty-five. So really, the the origin of this project is, you know, the regional utilities identify a resource shortfall, they issue RFPs, developers respond with projects that comply with the needs of that RFP or request for a proposal. And then those projects enter into the local government or the HJ processes and the permitting agencies, fire authorities, et cetera oversee the project development. And you know, they're the ones that ensure compliance and policy. Really, as as part of meetings, utilities meeting their requirement under CETA, the resources that the utilities are required to procure are intermittent solar, wind, are intermittent resources as opposed to more traditional fuels. Therefore, there's a strong need for either other resources that deliver what utilities are looking for, which is firm dispatchable power. Batteries happen to be a great example of a resource that is firm dispatchable power for utility. Where it is kind of best project or battery energy storage system projects fit in in times of peak generation or over generation, whether it's solar or wind, that's when the battery is going to be charging. And then in times of shortfall, that's when the battery will discharge. In addition, it's projects like these that are helping to increase grid resiliency. As the there's an increased demand for electrification of our grids, whether it's just through population growth, whether it's from electrification of vehicle fleets, et cetera. There's need to kind of backstop that with, again, that firm dispatchable power, that that resource that can be deployed instantaneously. Additionally, we have an aging transmission infrastructure. It's projects like these that help upgrade that transmission infrastructure that whether it's directly attributed to the project or a portion of it is attributed to the project. It's projects like these that upgrade the grid. I also include this to mention that for those not familiar, HB eleven seventeen, it's, you know, further commitment from the legislature that at state level that acknowledges that blackouts and brownouts are an issue. It specifically calls out battery storage as a backstop or a solution to that. And projects like these are what it's specifically looking for. So currently, the state is relying on a mixture including carbon emitting fossil fuel resources to meet their peak energy needs. Batteries are a safe, proven, and reliable resource that is also cost-effective in replacing some of that fossil fuel resource and increasing deployment of batteries such as these is what helps the state meet its climate goals. Importantly, I like to point out that, you know, we'll get to this a little bit later, but when when batteries are located close to the load centers, that's what helps provide the grid reliability. So a little bit about the technology itself, I think this, you know, will help spur some questions maybe from from you guys. But there's projects like these, this is an AC charged battery or a grid charged battery. This does not generate any power. It's designed to store power that's generated elsewhere on the grid and then discharge it when there's a shortage of power. And a kind of quick few facts about batteries being a safe and proven technology. They're they're very minimal footprint for it's sort of apples and oranges comparison, but because it's a generation project. But if you, a project like ours, which is a two-hundred-megawatt battery project, if you were to, if there was a two-hundred-megawatt solar project, for instance, that would be about two thousand acres. So it's a a very efficient and minimal footprint for the amount of power that we're getting out of it. There's a low noise impacts once they're operational. Again, once they're operational, there's no traffic to speak of. There's occasional O and M scheduled maintenance or an alert response, but otherwise it's unmanned. There's no air emissions. Once it's operational, there's no light pollution, very minimal visual impact. These are one story. There's, it doesn't dominate of you shed. And very, very minimal infrastructure needs. There's no increased demand on services. And I did want to include a specific slide on safety. And again, I've got, I know you're going to have questions on on safety. I've got Robert here as well, if I can't answer them. But when the bottom line is when these projects are properly designed, properly installed, properly tested and properly maintained, there's very little risk in a properly installed project. These projects are going to be built with the latest in technological advancements and lessons learned from previous technologies, previous battery chemistries. We are going to be using the newest, safest battery technology out there or lithium-ion phosphate, LFP. That's where the industry is sort of been trending. But we wanted to acknowledge and make that commitment upfront that we're going to use LFP batteries on this project. Additionally, the battery manufacturers have also had a lot of lessons learned and they've moved away from previous either containment or deployment solutions that, for instance, used old recycled shipping containers. Now, these projects come with purpose-built enclosures. Everything's accessed from the exterior. There's no doors that people are, first responders are walking into. Again, we have Puget Regional Fire Authority here as well and who we've we've met with several times and are meeting with on a monthly ongoing basis. And we've, you know, as part of that meeting with them, we've made some commitments to what our commitments are going to be operationally for the project. And so part of that is before the project is commissioned, we'll have a manufacturer sponsored and led safety training with all of the first responders. The IFC is updated every three years, every three years. So biannually, we're also going to repeat that safety training so that we're not only capturing any human resources transfer or coming and going, we're also capturing ahead of time or in arrears any changes to the IFC that have happened since the last train. And we're, you know, again, committed to working with the fire authority to make sure that they're, and, you know, and they're working with King County as well throughout the process. Another one that I wanted to include a slide on was noise. That's a common. It seems that it's been a commonly talked about issue. But what I can say and is that these projects are operationally quiet. This project is going to have to comply with CETA, I'm sorry, SEPA. It is going to be, its SEPA impacts are going to be evaluated by King County. And we will have to comply with the local noise ordinance, which this project will. The noise is going to be measured at the fence line like it would for any other use. And any excess noise would be mitigated by either a wall or sound dampening enclosure or other engineered solution. And right now, I wanted to let everybody know too that we do have a noise study underway. Not sure quite when the results will be ready, but it is pending. And I also did want to include also kind of an example so people can contextualize this. But roughly at the fence line, what this noise would be equivalent to be when your heat pump kicks on in your garage, which is about fifty decibels. So this is a falls into kind of the new-to-me bucket for a lot of people. It's not necessarily a new technology. It's just new to, you know, new to me. But I also like to include a list of while this is newer for the state at at the scale that it's going to be required. There are also a lot of examples where the technology already exists. It's already in use. It's already been proven safe and reliable. And every one of the utilities listed there either has a demonstration project or a microgrid project with best technology. Additionally, there's some other large-scale projects that are either up under construction or late approved or late-stage development and sort of in the rest of the region. And now I'll talk a little bit about the project itself. Off to the sort of bottom right where the safety pin is in the Google Earth image there. That's the Berrydale substation. The red line follows what would be our proposed transmission line path over across PSC property across one sixty-fourth to the pink parcel noted there. Part of the reason that this project is located here, or I should say the number one reason that this project is located where it is, is that for there to be much use for these projects, they need to be located as close to practically possible as the existing infrastructure, wherever their point of interconnection is, whether that's in this case, it's a substation. So we looked around that substation for projects that are for parcels that closest met the needs. And that's how we ended up there. It's privately owned property. It's consistent with utility uses, which are allowed under the current zoning. And we've planned aesthetic improvements. And this is where we really want to engage with the community and use something that the community is going to not recoil from. So, for instance, we have a portfolio of these projects in California, very different community characteristics. We're not keen to just necessarily replace what we're doing on those projects and project in just outside of Covington. So that's where we want to get community feedback on, you know, what the character and what we would like to see. This is a little close-up view of the Berrydale substation. It's on a forty-seven-acre site. It's a two-hundred-and-thirty-kb substation. The substation itself's got about an acre footprint. It includes all the electrical infrastructure you would expect, transformers, breakers, racking. There are all, there are also existing emergency response plans in place there. And really, it's our intent to coexist with the existing infrastructure. So this is where I'm going to kind of show two things. One, not where we started, but where the site plan was when we kind of first, and again, this is all very preliminary, very early stage. As we're finalizing our technology decisions, this will continue to evolve, but we did want to show what was a realistic first cut at this. So this was one of our early versions of the site plan. It's about a nine-to-twelve-month, eight-to-twelve-month construction schedule. In our meeting with the school district, they stressed a very few things. It was actually a shortlist and as top of it was safety and number two was safety. So the the commitment that we made is that, you know, we're going to work with the school district as we're developing our construction plan to ensure that deliveries and construction schedules line up with any school schedules and obviously not wanting to interfere with drop-off in the morning or kids walking or riding the rides to school. The start of operations is planned for twenty twenty-five. Again, this is a sample layout that we've shown. This is the sort of what I'll call, you know, the original version that we had. And then we can go to the next one. So again, this is draft, but and I mentioned at the start of this, we've been at this for about a year now in and around King County and Covington with this project. And we have listened to a lot of feedback. So we've moved some things around. And again, this is still early. We don't know if this is what's going to be what will finally be approved, but this layout avoids the most impacted wetlands off to the right side of it. And it actually enhances those wetlands as a part of the proposed mitigation for the project. And that lower section would be the stormwater infrastructure and outfall. You can go to the next one. These are some preliminary visual simulations. And these, you know, again, these are sort of difficult to produce. And we've gotten some feedback on what other views people would like to see. So the next round of these will have a few more both views of, you know, angles and also directions coming from the south as well as the north. But the general gist here and what we hope comes across is that on the bottom one, you see a darker area and a few more trees. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish here is we want that wall behind it to be screened as much as possible with native vegetation so that as people are driving by, it doesn't look like anything's there. That's really the point. So let's talk about the project benefits here. This number is going to continue to change because it's highly tied to the cost of the batteries. But as of right now, it'll be about a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar investment in the local economy. It's guaranteed source of long-term tax revenue for the region. And during the construction, it'll employ approximately a hundred well-paying construction jobs for local union workers. This project, again, I mentioned it earlier, it'll help strengthen the existing electrical infrastructure. It'll help upgrade the existing electrical infrastructure. It maximizes the use of renewables and really, it's powers about two-hundred-thousand homes. This is in a manner of speaking, it's a backup battery for the area, you know, about two-hundred-thousand homes worth for for four hours. And again, safe and proven technology. So that's it.
Public comment will be afterwards. All right. Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
Counsel, I will go one by one for anybody that has questions. And then I'll come back a second time if needed. Joe, start with you.
First, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate that. And I know everyone in this room appreciates you coming tonight. So thank you for that. You actually answered my first question that I had written down. But my next question, and I know this is on the minds of everybody in this room, worst-case scenario. We have to always plan for that worst-case scenario, which is why you've been working with the fire department, I'm sure. Something bad happens and there is an incident. What are we looking at in time and ideas of environmental impact? What are we looking at in ideas of? You know, if there is a fire, how long? How long do they usually take to put out? Is there special ways we put these out because they are lithium batteries? So I know that there's a difference to that. And then if there is any issues, how do we prepare the schools and the neighborhoods for these type of issues? Because this is really a neighborhood, not an industrial area. So I just want to know those answers.
Sure. So what I'll start with, and then I'll kind of Sure. Um so what I'll start with and then I'll kind of hand it over to Robert here, who's the uh the true expert at this. Is that as part of our C P A review uh and as part of the outreach that we've had with the Puget Regional Fire Authority already. Um we're we're kind of formulating now the basis of what will be our emergency response plan that'll end up getting approved by the Puget Regional Fire Authority. Um so Robert, is there anything you want to add after that on?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Robert Steele. I'm with the Hiller Companies. We all wonder who I am. Um Hiller Companies is the number one bar protection specialist right now in energy storage in the country. I happen to live in Eastern Washington, so I'm a consultant with them. There is, there's several industrial safety standards we have to follow. One is called U L ninety five forty. It's for stationary energy storage systems. I'm a subcommittee member on that. There's an installation standard called N F P A eighty five. I'm a contributing member to that. And actually, if you go look at the N X G, I was the significant contributing author for what goes into hazard mitigation analysis. Answer one of your questions. Um a typical energy storage system fire could go as long as six hours. Um I know there's a lot of concerns on what happens, how do you mitigate energy storage fires? Um typically, we have to let them burn themselves out because that's the best thing you could do. They are with a battery, if you put water on it, now becomes also an electrical hazard. So the best thing to do is once it catches fire, to let it burn itself out and contain the fire. But you this will all be in, it was called a hazard mitigation analysis, so be given to the first responders and they'll be trained to it. How they're gonna contain that so it doesn't propagate to additional containers. In the global market sector right now in energy storage, there has not been a container to container level fire to date. And we've there've been several fires throughout global that happened. Muscles in in Asia. We've had some events here in the United States, none of which have propagated from container to container. They blistered some paint next door and stuff like that, but that's about the extent of the 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 fire, the damages that's happened. Um plume, everybody's concerned about the the smoke plume. Every fire has toxic gases in it. And while I could tell you that I give you the research on what's what's the what it consists of. It's primarily gonna be a polymer fire. That's worst case scenario. If you compare that to something else, a house fire has more toxics and toxins that are emitted than you've been that are emitted in a battery energy storage system fire. We have research to provide all that, but hopefully answered all your questions.
Uh that answered that. I appreciate that. And honestly, that's all I had at this moment. I'm sure my colleagues will help me get more questions.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer.
Hi, thank you. So I saw in the information that we were provided ahead of time some brief information about security of the facility, including a fence, cameras. I'm curi- I'm very curious for more detail on that, just as we see on the news. I'm sure a lot of you saw it, some people, you know, were breaking into our uh power grid recently.
Yep.
And secondly, do are these type of facilities potentially targets?
So to answer the, well, actually, let me start with the second one, because that's a little bit easier to answer. I mean, anything is a target, but this isn't any more so than what a substation would be by by any stretch. This doesn't direct where things go. It is close enough uh that I
But it wouldn't have the right impact as a more of a reserve, I see that.
And on the the first side, we've gotten that question a lot because of things that have happened recently. So what I can say is that uh it's remotely monitored twenty four seven, three hundred and sixty five. Um we're gonna have thermal cameras on the site, so if anything were to enter the site, we would know about it before anybody else. One of the things we've talked about with both in in Puget Regional and others is that it's likely going to be, not likely, but it's a strong likelihood that it'll be us calling them if anything were to go amiss, because we'll know about it through the remote monitoring before anything. And that goes for our our security system as well. So um remotely monitored infrared cameras. It'll have, you know, again, the final kind of fencing decisions and plan and and wall treatment will depend on uh feedback that we get and through that process, but there are minimum standards for that that we have to meet as well.
Um you covered aesthetics, I think. I like the trees around there. Um how many similar storage units are in the United States like this?
Well, uh Hiller's working on two hundred.
That are current and active, not being built.
Oh, how many are operational?
Yes, thank you.
Well, uh at this scale, it it it's tough to say. I'd be speculating. I know uh we personally have a portfolio of about two gigawatts or, you know, eight projects at similar size in California that are some are under construction now. Um so if they're being deployed, uh it it's it's one of those things where if you looked at it from ten years ago, it would have been just a smattering here and there. And then five years ago, it would look dramatically different. And then last year, it's an incredible spike. So it's it's growing rapidly.
So operationally, ten, a hundred, a thousand?
Somewhere between ten and a hundred.
Okay. And how many? Within how many years have these been operational? When was the first one go live?
I would have to get back to you on that.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Yes, and I want to thank you also.
I'm sorry, thousands in operation.
Okay, thank you.
So that that brings up my question. Of the thousands that are operational, do you have statistics on incidents related to fire? And where there, where you're saying there is no container to container potential fire? Has that, I think you said that's never happened before, correct?
That's never happened before. And additionally, there's there has not been a um with you know, I can speak to Tesla because that's what uh while this may or may not end up being Tesla, that's where our California uh fleet is and half of their current fleet is L F P and to date, there have not been any uh incidents of fire on their L F P projects. So yeah, to date, there there has been not that we're aware of any L F P fires.
Okay, thank you. So one, one container um on fire would just have to burn out over the course of the six hours.
Right.
All right. Thank you. Um the other question I have is on the the noise. And um I understand from what you've said, there would only be fifty decibels. We've had a lot of public comment and and none of this, you know, I was I able to research and find statistically how accurate that was. That they emit huge amounts of noise, but but of the ones that are operational, they're all at fifty decibels or less.
Yeah, we will, like I said, that's where the, so the noise effect is measured at the fence line or the wall or the, you know, whatever boundary you're you're including. And the threshold here, it's actually forty nine decibels, so will be required to meet that. And what I can say is that, you know, that that accounts for you know, how quickly noise dissipates with distance and also including obstacles in the way. So the the numbers that I've seen floating around are just not anywhere in reality.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nelson, thank you for coming out. Appreciate it. Um I've got a list of the questions um that I want to go through uh and then no particular order. One of the things you you started off, you mentioned that this is a two hundred and fifty million dollar benefit to the local economy. I and I've got a lot of clarifying questions, so just take him uh in that vein. How do you define local economy? And then is that per year? I mean, what's where's where's that number come from?
Sorry, one more time on the end there.
So you you mentioned that this is a two hundred and fifty million dollar benefit to the local economy. So my question's gonna be, well, how do you define local economy? And is that per year? Um or is that over the project's entire life? Specifically, what I'm asking, how much is that gonna go to Covington? You know, when you, and then you said there's tax revenues from that too. Is that on the sale of this uh electricity? How does Covington's tax revenues benefit from this project?
So uh primarily from the property tax basis that'll skyrocket from deploying, you know, that level of capex on, you know, that use. Um that's the primary source. We've, we've been doing some work to figure out exactly what that number's going to be. We expect to have a a more concrete answer for that very shortly, but
The specific tax revenue for Covington.
Yeah, and and it's it's one of those things where it's it's sort of it's complicated right now because of the new uh tax incentives that have come out, both at the federal and at the state level. So it's sort of, it remains to be seen um what that final number's gonna be.
Do you have a estimate?
It's gonna be in the millions.
So the two hundred and fifty million, is that for the entire country or um what is what is, so the benefit to the local economy is two hundred and fifty million?
Oh, yeah.
And how does that, how's that calculated?
So again, that's a rough approximation of the overall capex of the of the project, um which would then filter into how much the property taxes increase and then filter into how much of that goes to
Over the life of the project.
Over the life of the project.
And the project is what, fifty years?
Uh, ban of this. It's honestly probably twenty.
Twenty years. So what is that? Two million, two, two point five per year?
Uh it, well
Roughly.
I don't, again, wanna
We're all targeting.
I mean, yeah, it's several million.
Okay, in economic benefit to Covington.
Correct.
You mentioned in one of the slides that this is a a backup battery for the area in that the capacity is roughly four hours. Is that what you said?
So i- in terms of how we uh kind of think about how large the project is uh a- and how do we attribute a size to it? It's a two hundred megawatt for our system, so you know, an eight hundred megawatt hour battery. Um so however you wanna kind of divide that, you you know, it's a two hundred megawatts or or four hours or hundred megawatts for eight hours uh is it's just depends on how it's deployed.
So if it was discharging full bore between four to eight hours of power.
Or that size, uh, yeah.
And then, again, I want to clarify, you said for the area. What's the area?
Again, that like two hundred thousand home. I mean, it's it's really just to give it a context, give it an idea of of how big.
Yeah, and I I don't mean to be difficult. You're you're saying this is for Covington. There are two hundred thousand homes. They're not two hundred thousand homes in Covington. So one of the things we hear from people is this how we're gonna stay local?
That's a common question, and uh what I can say is that it's it's not like, and and one of the things we've heard in the past, oh, it's gonna get sent to Bellevue. Well, if
Or California.
If right here is dark and uh the next town south is is dark, uh it's gonna go here first. Uh so that's the the way to think of it. Um if everybody's got their lights on, it's gonna go to where it has the biggest impact.
Okay, I just lost when it stopped, but um but but these batteries aren't going to sit there just idle. There there's going to be constant demand up and down for this power. So it's not like the batteries are sitting there waiting and then it goes. So they're getting discharged and recharged constantly, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um so that power is going wherever there's a a demand in the system and the system includes the entire U S?
No, and and it's really hard to say operationally how how that would happen. Um it also will will be charging and discharging, but again, depends on how it's being deployed. That's getting into something, you you know, uh what's called ancillary services where uh it just depends on how the utility ends up deploying it.
Okay, not, sorry, I'm not totally understanding that, but I I guess in short, it means that this power doesn't necessarily have to go to Covington. It'll go where it's most needed. If Covington has a blackout, you're saying that it would go here first?
That's right.
Even if California says they'll pay four times the amount for that?
That I can't say.
Fuck, okay. I just, I guess you you're gonna get the gist. This community is being asked to have this facility developed and built here. And they have a number of questions about the benefit it's going to provide to this community. And there's a number of assurances that are being stated. So another question I have is about the fifty D B A's at the fence line. Um and again, I appreciate you being here. This is, this is tough stuff. That's per unit, correct?
That's wherever it's measured at the fence line. It has to be uniformly
Fifty, fifty, okay. Um well, I appreciate that clarification. Um do we know what, so there's a, you mentioned that it's like a heat pump going on. Heat pump continually on is different than a heat pump going on and off. Um and that's one of the things we get questioned about too, is not just the noise level, but the type of noise. So I often equate it to you know, mosquito's not very loud, but a mosquito in your tent is annoying as all get out. So that heat pump is going on and off continually throughout the day. You could see where the the public's concerned about that. So tell me more about the the type of noise that comes out of this, these facilities.
Uh it's, like I mentioned, it's intermittent. Um and without a that we'll be able to, I guess, clarify some of those questions further once the noise study is is available.
Yeah. Um you mentioned the maintenance schedule for these. I appreciate that. Can you just give us more uh detail on what that looks like, how often that is? Would, I appreciate that there's, it's gonna be monitored remotely. So I'm getting a couple of questions. Where is the remote monitoring? And then how often is someone physically gonna be on site there?
So the uh exact you know, kind of frequency and and visits will depend on ultimately the final technology selection. It's uh and those will come into play as you know, building permit decisions are being made. What I can say is, you know, they break down into kind of two buckets. There's routine scheduled maintenance and then there's you you know, service alerts. Um so I'm sorry, what was the
I just wondered what the regular maintenance, as you mentioned that, and then how often would someone, depending upon, I guess, the type of technology? Is it once a year, four times a year?
It's, it it, it's really in the like once a month timeframe.
Now, we mentioned some of the mitigation measures. I think the city would be really interested in hearing more about how you intend to mitigate uh some of the soundscape, um the wildlife. I appreciate the it looks like the project has been amended since we first saw it to address some of the wetlands issues. I'd be interested more in that. Uh has uh Tanaska ever cited a facility this close to a school?
Uh yes, one of our projects that's under construction right now in California is across the street from the school.
And how is that, uh how's that being? Uh what's the public's response?
They were supportive.
Quiet, please.
And then the another question I have, um it's uh in the back of a lot of our homeowners' minds is, has Tanaska done a study or has any information on the impact of on property values next to these facilities? What's the potential impact there?
It's something that we have looked closely at and the studies that we we have, which we're, you know, happy to provide, show that show that energy projects, and the one that we've seen in particular was renewable energy projects don't have a negative impact on property values. So we're, we're happy to share that.
Oh, you mentioned about safety training with the RFA and I appreciate you reaching out to Puget Sound. And I've got a couple of questions for them as well. Mentioned that's going to happen biannually. Is that going to happen here in Covington biannually? Or is that something you'll do regionally? Or how is that going to work? And then in fires, we're finding that we often have calls for assistance from other departments. And so will they be getting the training as well? And how will that, will that work?
So right now, that's sort of Puget's, Puget Regional's call. But we're, of course, open to anything that they suggest.
All right, I'm gonna stop for now. I may have others though in a minute.
You bet, I'll come back.
Thank you for presenting today. I have a handful of questions as well, though. I'll go through a few and then we do around the horn again. So first of all, you did mention about the noise. I'm gonna go back to that one. The noise studies that are underway, where are they underway? What locations are you doing those in?
We hired an engineering firm to perform it.
No, but you said that there are currently studies underway. So what locations are being studied?
The noise.
Is it for our site?
Yes, for this project, the noise study is currently underway.
But you have to have something to measure the noise coming from it in order to, to come in. So are you using facilities that are already operational and then determining with the trees or with the type of containers, then how that would impact?
All of those things are taken into account, yeah.
Okay, so the store.
Various different iterations of mitigation measures are taken into account. What's it like during the full leaf situation with trees? If, if that's what you're using, what it's like with a leaf off scenario? What wall heights have an impact? Discrete elements of the project emit more noise than others. So you're having to mitigate against those things differently. And then also sort of different ambient noise exists, and this is getting probably more into the methodology than, than I probably should, but as, as they different emitters emit different noise levels and from different directions. So all of those things are taken into account.
As far as additional locations, was any, any thought or consideration given to any other location in the area specifically? I'm thinking about BPA. There's a huge grid right there that has no residents around it, and I don't know what the property accessibility is for, for purchasing or use. But are there any other locations that were considered?
Definitely. The, the unfortunate reality is that this substation, I'm here in this project this year because this substation was identified as having a resource shortfall. So in order to get as close to the substation as possible, we looked at all of the kind of variables that exist on any given piece of property, all of the constraints that come into play. This is a very wet area. So naturally, we're gonna face that headwind with just about any property we're looking at. And you're specifically questioning BPA, and we actually have tried that. And unfortunately, that's not an option for them.
Can you give us an example of some of the cities and towns that you did property value study for?
I'd have to provide that later.
Okay, that'd be fair. And also, I'd be curious the name, the name of the school that was facility was signed across. And as far as safety training, is that going to be just with Puget Sound Regional Fire, or would that include any other neighboring service organizations that may actually help to come support? We're very, we collaborate a lot in this area.
Again, that's sort of Puget Regional's call, but we're absolutely open to that. That's, that's an easy thing to agree to.
That's all I have to know.
Thanks, Beth. Christina.
Thank you for coming here. Thank you to all my council members for asking all the good questions. They were vital and necessary. I'm still struggling with all the unknowns. I really am, and I there's, to be able to before against agree, disagree, facts, statistics, numbers, which is something that you cannot provide for us today. And that does not sit well with me. My children who, and I think other parents' children who will be attending, that's in middle school. It's, we can put a name to it. It's personal. It's not necessarily, oh, just another school, oh, just another fire. Should there be a fire? What's the protocol for the school? Do we have that in place? I mean, if we have safety protocols and trainings, I still don't understand why, how the option to put it in such a densely resident residential area next to a school could even viably be an option. I am struggling with that. I also have a hard time believing that our property tax, property values would even remotely stay the same for those very reasons. It sounds like you have many sites that are in construction, have potential. But can you give us something that has a history that you can show for that says, hey, this is a site that we've had up for so, so amount of years? This is the percentage of fires that are a risk to the surrounding neighborhood. Is there anything concrete that you have that you can tell us?
I guess, again, I'll just highlight that, you know, we are proposing LFP technology for this site. And to date, there have been no, zero LFP battery storage fires.
Okay, so Covington will be a guinea pig.
I wouldn't say that. How many are deployed currently?
Sure.
That's a great question.
Thank you.
And I get it frequently.
I imagine.
So the Electric Power Research Institute, funded by the US government, looks at the global market sector on energy storage. Since January of twenty nineteen, there have been thirty-three fires globally. Or containerized energy stored systems that we have right now. There's only been one fire. It happened just recently with the last couple of months down in Chandler, Arizona. The other fires that have happened that are, that you see in the news, the Mcmakin fires was one that everybody's read up on. It was implemented before a lot of the safety protocols were in place. So the UL ninety-five forty standards did not exist when that went in. There are, I'm currently working on analysis on energy sources in downtown Costa Mica, Costa Mesa, California, right next to a Walmart and a gas station. So a lot of the analysis that we'll consider, and this goes into hazard mitigation analysis, will address a lot of these concerns that you have. So like in one case, another, another California installation, because of its proximity to the office building, we have to look at the worst case scenario, what happens if the plume goes directly towards the, towards the building? And what do we have to do with the first responders in, it was called a fire management plan or fire risk plan? That they're gonna respond to. So more than likely, what will happen in a situation like that, depending upon the scenario? You may have to have a mitigation strategy of either evacuation or shelter in place and shutting down, shutting down the AC system. That way they don't, they don't bring the plume in. The plume study that we're doing shows that because the, the density of the materials and the temperature typically rises above a lot, this, 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 it will go high. But it's still not gonna eliminate your concerns because they're valid. My, my children are in the school right next to this here. And so part of the analysis that we do is be showing how do we mitigate that risk from happening? That analysis is not yet done, but I've done them for, for several other around the country. I can tell you the benefit of my experience, what I've done elsewhere. But there are plans in place to mitigate this, even like if there's a house fire next door. So it's stuff like that.
Thank you for that. And it sounds like there's always new measures taking place. However, it would, it would rock me to my core to know that we are learning on the mistakes, on current mistakes. And the price is our children. I think that's fair.
Yeah, that's true. I'm not, I, 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 right, because I, I had small children as well, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. I have a, outside of safety concerns. It, there doesn't seem to be more answers than, you know, there's studies being done right now, but thank you for that. Can I ask about this? Assuming the decibel level goes above fifty, what are the consequences to Tanaska?
Well, again, for, for things like that, you know, those are, are all impacts that are evaluated, you know, with, with our emergency response plan or our fire protection plan or our noise study. Those are all things that are going to be considered under SEPA. So those impacts would be evaluated and, you know, it would probably start with a code enforcement violation.
Exactly. Thank you. Have there been others, locations where there have been, has been a violation?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And I'm just gonna jump right in. A code violation is a fine. I would hate to assume that Tanaska would be willing and ready to pick up the fine just to keep the operation running. And, and then, but it's just a valid concern. When we're talking multi, multi millions, and I think it's the same concern that Sean addressed. How do we know it's staying here versus going somewhere where larger dollar signs are being shown? So there's, again, we come back to a study being done, correct? And we, as a society and as as residents should assume that you will make solid and good choices when these studies come back, correct?
Well, again, it would have to be approved by the county.
Right. As often as I would love to say that I agree or disagree with the safety and even state energy goals. This is personal and it's a lot smaller than county or state. I thank you for that, and I may have a question following up.
Two quick questions. You meant, so the facility is being built by Tanaska, Kingfisher Battery Energy Storage System. You mentioned Tesla. So is the intention to sell it? Can you clarify, is it, it's gonna be named and spec'd by Tesla? Is it gonna be sold to Tesla?
It, it, that's just, I mentioned them as an option for the battery supplier, but it doesn't have to be then.
Okay, I understand. So the facility is going to be, continue to be monitored and maintained by Tanaska?
It, it'll be maintained by the, the operator of the project.
Operator of the project, okay. So, and I know that once this facility is up and running, it's to, I know that Puget Sound Energy would have to go through an RFP process and stuff, or you would have to go through the RFP process, participate in it, sell the energy to PSC, and then once it's sold to PSC, then they govern where the power goes on their grid, but PSC keeps it here unless it's excess, then they sell it. I mean, that's the way their current power grid works now.
That's right.
So this would just be backing up the current power grid.
That's right.
All right, thank you. So, any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a statement if that's okay.
Let me get the questions first.
Sounds good.
Could I provide a clarification on Sean's questioning about the economic impact?
Yes, please.
So I, I think we left it with the impression that Covington was going to be receiving millions a year, and that's just not the case. So we'll receive some sales tax revenue from construction workers during construction that might shop or eat lunch here. But the majority of those, the revenue that was mentioned, will, will be going to King County. Covington won't see that.
This is built in King County. Thank you, Regan.
Well, you took one of my questions, Regan. That's okay, I have another one. Will, do these facilities and will this facility in particular be subject to external audits to ensure compliance with standards and with maintenance protocols? And who are those external audits? Done by?
So, you know, the project will have the commitments that it makes. Again, it would initially fall on a code enforcement thing with King County.
There is no regulatory agency governing these types of projects?
There's FERC, which, you know, would be in, that would have to be in compliance with the, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
And they don't audit?
That's not really their, their role. They, they certainly are aware if something is amiss. The, the bottom line is, is things not going to be just sitting there, not running after.
And that's the assumption, but at least in my day job, that's not an assumption that's safe to make. And so there's usually agencies that do audits. And so I was just curious, that's interesting that there, that there isn't for this. Do operators per, and who would be the operating agency, that PSC? Who operates this facility?
Whoever ends up owning it.
And how do we not know that right now?
Well, as Mayor Wagner pointed out, as we kind of started with this, the project is you know, part of a competitive solicitation process. So I can't really say much more than that commercially.
Okay. Do you know if operators can conduct internal audits, or do we just hope that they do, or assume that they do?
I know that anything. It, it, it will, first, it'll have to comply with, you know, as, as I mentioned, the permits standards in, in King County. But depending on who is the eventual operator of the project, if it's a utility that's regulated by the state, then yes, there would be an audit associated with it. Or, or at least a, an ongoing evaluation of their compliance with their, you know, performance.
And I think this is my last question. So can anyone put in a bid to run one of these things? Like, could I? No, and why is that?
There are regulations in place at the state level that determine who can be an IPP or an independent power producer.
Okay, that makes me feel better. All right, thanks.
Thank you. So the, the RFP that went out to the operate, the potential operating agencies, they were invited, correct? You would only have sent those to qualifying agencies?
It was an open solicitation for offers. So anybody that had a project that could comply with the standards that they set out or the specific things that they were looking for could bid into the RFP. And there was several steps along the way and, and, you know, there's a culling at the beginning of non-compliant bids.
Thank you. So in other states where you've got the operating agency, are some of them state entities so that they're governed by state regulations?
There's, in every state but Nebraska, there is a Public Utilities Commission that ultimately oversees operation of assets like these.
Okay.
Whether it's through the utility or whether it's through independent assets themselves.
And do they conduct outside audits?
I, I can't speak to what their best practices are.
EPA doesn't have any jurisdiction over any of these?
There's no federal nexus that would involve the EPA now.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Hi, Tom. You doing good?
Tommy.
Appreciate it. Yeah, Tom. Oh, is it Tony?
Tommy.
Tommy. Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry. I've got a couple of questions for the RFA, if they'd be willing to answer those. Look in the back. Who wants to go? Thank you. And then I've got just a couple more for you, Tom. Thanks. Sean, how are you doing?
Good, sir. How are you?
I'm okay.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm Deputy Chief Sean Panwell with the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority.
Thank you for being here tonight. So we've heard you had conversations with Tanaska about this facility. You tell us a little bit about those conversations, what you You tell us a little bit about those conversations, what you talked about, um, uh, what's come out of them so far?
Sure, right now, we've had, uh, kind of high-level discussions about what training would be, or that there would be, uh, first responder training, and then, um, all the compliance with, uh, NPA standards and building standards.
In let's just, uh, assume the facility is built as of this moment right now, does Puget Sound RFA have the equipment it needs to fight a uh, representative fire that we possibly have? Let's just assume it's a one container for six hours. Do you have that?
Yeah, because what, what we would be doing is really exposure protection on any of the other containers that are to either side of that, let that fire burn, and then use our hazmat teams to go do, um, downwind monitoring, and then treat it like any other potential for a hazmat incident, to make sure that there's no, uh, downstream effects.
Are there any other, so, um, so basically the, so one of my questions was gonna be, what's the approach? And it sounds like the approach is to just let the fire burn and prevent it from spreading to other cells or offsite.
Correct.
That's it, yeah. Is that typical for other fires? I guess some chemical fires or anything like that? Is that the approach?
Uh, there are times where having hazmat on fire is actually better than putting the fire out and allowing yourself to have a giant spill. The, the environmental impact is bigger. And that, the, the combustion process usually makes whatever's burning less, um, impactful. Because it changes the chemical.
Right. And what's the follow-up with the surrounding communities after that, after that type of fire? How do we determine the impact on downwind?
So we, we have hazmat, our hazmat team has, I was on our hazmat team for like twelve years, so this is right in my wheelhouse. Thanks for asking these questions. We have, we have, uh, a lot of monitoring equipment, so anytime we have any kind of chemical fire or chemical spill, we, um, place monitors downrange to monitor, um, the, uh, the, the air impacts, and we have the ability to do that continuously, so we know if we get outside of any kind of uh, harmful tolerance, and then we'll take, um, whether it's, uh, evacuation or shelter in place for residents that are downwind until we get safe readings.
So the option, depending upon the types and amount of the chemical in the air, the options are shelter in place or evacuate.
Correct.
And would that be typical for, you think, for these battery fires? Is that basically what we would do is uh, have an order that basically people should shelter in place until they hear they need to evacuate?
Or we would just evacuate first off.
Okay.
So we, we would pick one of those strategies based on the intensity, the area, um, what the chemicals are. And then, because they're not sure about what their battery, I can't speak to which, which technique we would use.
Um, and this may be, you know, what you, what's the, what are the prevailing winds in this area? You know, is it gonna accrue to the north or south? I mean, I'm just wondering how far and where we, uh, who are we going to have to alert?
So the way that we do that, I don't, I, I don't want to speak to the prevailing winds, because I, I'd be guessing.
I don't know either.
We have, we have a wind meter, and we have, uh, plume modeling technology that we use inside of our, uh, hazmat units. So we would, we actually put, uh, anemometer up, so we know wind direction speed. And then we use that plume modeling technology that that's connected feeds into, that gives us an idea of, of the plume, of the area that we need to evacuate, and we typically evacuate beyond that. It's better to think your evacuation area larger than smaller, have to go back and make a bear.
And it'll be interesting to, to know more about how we communicate that with the public. Um, how is that, that through websites? Is that through the radio? Is that the EMS system? I mean, how are people that, to know? I mean, I guess if the battery's on fire, people will know, um, but how would they know to evacuate?
Uh, we use our law enforcement partners to be able to go downwind, and they can help with evacuation. We also have a, uh, system where we can, it's a reverse nine-one-one system that we can talk to Valleycom, and they can send, they can call everybody in that area and give them either a shelter in place or evacuation.
Appreciate that. Um, if you become aware, or if there is equipment that you later determine you need for this type of fire, please let us know. Um, I suspect we will put that in our comments. Um, so I, I would ask the RFA to just to research this and see what type of special equipment's needed to fight these fires, because I, I would hate for us not to know that it's out, not have it, so. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that would be part of the ongoing conversation with the, with the developer, that these are the, the special, this is special equipment, special to your site.
Right.
Whether they keep it onsite or provided to us would be a, a part of the conversation.
Yeah, that, actually, that might be good to have both onsite and mobile, so, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, Tommy, just to, to finish up, two questions. So I know this is gonna generate more questions, and so I'm just gonna ask if you're open to communication from us for additional questions.
Absolutely.
That, and I think you've
Yeah, we don't expect this to be a one-time
Right.
thing either, so.
Well, that gets to my second question. The, the county is the permitting agency on this, and I appreciate you coming out here tonight and, and answering our questions. But it's ultimately the county that's gonna make the decision and is going to take public comment on this. Um, I don't know if they're gonna hold a public hearing, um, but I would ask you to support uh, a request I'm going to make, that they do hold a public hearing, and that they hold it at Mattson Middle School, if that will work. I, I think just as for public uh, outreach and for transparency, um, there needs to be a public hearing, and I'm gonna ask the county to do that, and, uh, I, I would hope that Tanaska would support that request, so. That's it.
Good.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Sean. Beth, any other questions?
Um, not at the moment. I appreciate you'll be getting some of that information back to us, since it's behind a lot of questions.
Christina, any other questions?
Yes, just very shortly, two hundred thirty, um, watts, kilowatt? Uh, the facility?
Oh, two, two hundred thirty KV, that's the voltage of the substance.
Thank you. Would you consider this a small, medium, or large station in comparison to your other stations?
Uh, this is the, I'd say, average of what these are being deployed at, and that, that's for a variety of reasons, um. In order for the project to be able to support the interconnection cost at that voltage, it has to be a, a certain size for it to, uh, again, part of the uh, solicitation process, and, and really the only mandate that the utilities are under is to procure the lowest-cost power, so it becomes a balancing act of how, how to get to that number.
Thank you. Um, as we near twenty forty-five, and the need rises, how do we feel about Tanaska being able to even meet those needs? Is that, is this facility going to run out of its ability to meet even a significant need, population need? Do you see what I'm saying?
Uh, there will be a need for more facilities like these.
Okay, so we are assuming that there will be more facilities put in place?
There, there, in order to meet the, the thirteen and a half gigawatt shortfall, there will need to be more deployment of best projects.
And to clarify, the shortage is put in place by the requirements of the state, correct?
That's right.
Ultimately, by the legislation, thank you. Um, when do we expect the studies to be complete, both noise, safety? Um, we, we have this, it's in process, but when do we when is there, can we have an actual conversation with numbers?
It, it's weeks, not months. I, I can't give you an exact date, but it's weeks, not months.
Okay, and I'm assuming these are gonna be long before the permitting? It, this is for the purpose of the permitting, so I'm assuming these are gonna be long before permitting is discussed.
Before it's, it's part of the process, but yeah, before it, yeah, before it's completed.
Thank you. That is all?
Sure.
Yes, so I, I thank you again for coming out here, and I know everyone here is gonna be, is happy to have been here for that. Uh, I am still very worried about the location of this, and that's just because of the of it being in a highly residential area and being right next to, uh, a middle school where the fence is literally the boundary here, and I hope King County does hold a public hearing at Mattson, and Sean, I will join you in asking for that, because I feel that this room can only hold so many people. And, but Mattson can hold so many more, and will definitely bring people just from the outside flying area who couldn't make it here tonight. There are concerns that I have, but I want to thank my colleagues for making, asking excellent questions, and, uh, Sean, thank you for all those questions that you did have. I think we all learned a little something extra tonight for that, but I think that this, this project may be a need, but I don't believe it is a need to be right next to a middle school. So with that being said, I really do look forward to the permitting process and listening to what's going on, and finding out more information from this, but I am again, I will join Sean in asking King County to hold a public hearing on this at Mattson. And if they can't have to move it, it would, Kentwood would be another location that can't hold more people as well.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer, any other questions?
No.
Debbie, any other questions? Don, any other questions?
Uh, no other questions. I know we're gonna have public comment after this, so Tommy, if you're not busy, you wanna hear what the public has to say, I would, I'd stick around for that, so.
Beth, any other questions?
Oh, no, can I comment?
Yes.
Um, I would have to agree with, um, Councilmember Smolmo said, and I would also support having a public hearing close to, for accessibility purposes, holding it where the people are. Um, and making that very visceral of, this is the location, and this is what you see, and it can be really challenging for somebody who's council, King County Council, but doesn't live here to not really kind of grasp what we're looking at. So I, and I think the, the other problem that we're thinking, that a lot of folks have been thinking about, is that when you look at California, they do have rolling blackouts. We don't have that status yet, not to say that we, we won't at some point, but it is a different environment here than it is in other places, and we want to, um, our residents have stated that they want to preserve what that looks like. Whether they live in King County, or they live in Covington City Limits, it's something that's really important, and the safety aspect next to the school as well, so I, I'm looking forward to hearing about more statistics, but I'm I am cautiously optimistic that that would be a really good location for this type of facility, even though it is, uh, what BPA would like, or Puget Sound Energy would care for.
Okay, thanks, Beth. Christina, any other questions?
Yeah. I would just echo this in agreement for this public hearing at Mattson.
Presentation.
Presentation.
Thank you. Um, appreciate you being here. Uh, it is, I know that this is just the beginning, it's not the end of conversations. Uh, I a wealth of information, and I know our council will have more questions, as will everybody in the audience, and I also encourage a public hearing where comments can be put on the record, um, for King County, so they can hear it going through the SEPA process and permitting uh, whichever, good, bad, or indifferent, however, which direction that goes. I will support, like I said, going with that public hearing, whether it's at, uh, Mattson Junior High or Kentwood, and I'm sure we can get the school district to work with us, because that's a direct effect
I'm sure.
in that area. And, uh, I do not have any other questions, but thank you again for being here. I appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you to, um, Robert for being here as well, and Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. Tommy, thank you. Appreciate it.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. All right. And thank you all for being respectful during this presentation. Um, I've seen meetings elsewhere go sideways, so thank you. With that, um, we will go into our first of two public comment periods. Uh, first off, speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, and I see we still have eighty-eight left on there, click the raise hand button in your Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once I grant you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. We have quite a few people, um, wishing to give public comment. If somebody has already spoken and said what you've said, um, feel free to just say ditto, uh, so that we can get through everybody's comments. And then also, um, like I said earlier, this is a public comment period, uh, for council to hear your comments, whether it's about this King Fisher Battery Energy Storage System, or anything else going on in the city. And I also encourage you, if you have comments that you would like entered into public record with King County, to send your comments to King County, uh, or please attend if there's going to be a public hearing. So with that, I will go down this list first for those in attendance, and then I'll go online. First, I have Desiree Delay. You wish to give comment? Desiree, welcome.
My name's Desiree Delay. I live at two four six one seven, one hundred and sixty-eight, uh, Place Southeast. I didn't know I wasn't going first. Um, I'm very emotional, so please bear with me. Um, I am a community member. An educator. Number one, I'm a mother. This directly affects my family. Um, there's been a lot of talk about safety and protocol and research, and I really appreciate I like facts and numbers. I like, that's how I can wrap my brain around things, and there are a lot of unknowns and a lot of learning from other mistakes. Um, one specific example I think of are hoverboards. Those were approved to be sold in America, given out at Christmas in homes, e-bikes, motorcycles, skateboards, all of those things, and we're constantly seeing fires, disasters, homes, lives being destroyed and lost. Um, yes, we've learned from those. Things have been taken off the market, things have been changed, but once again, they were allowed to be sold in the first place. Um, they were deemed safe. Um, the word that stood out to me is properly. If things are properly designed, installed, and maintained, well, we all definitely try our best to do things properly and by the book, but we all know that there is air, there is mistakes, there are extenuating circumstances, there's weather to take into effect, things that we just cannot always hold accountable and have be predictable. And I would hate for us to go along with something that we hope is being maintained, designed, installed properly. I know that there are a lot of people here in the community, and I'm very proud to be a member of this community today. Another point, I'm also a union member. I'm very familiar with the local building trades of King County. And yes, just as the discussion was made about income coming into our local Covington community, the work won't necessarily be local. It'll also be very short-term for a project like this to be built. It's not something that is sustainable for our community members to make money off of. I just hope that with your support, we can reach out to those that really need to also hear it within King County, like you said, some of those decision makers. I'm not against these things. Um, as Joe said, there's a need, but there's not a need literally in our backyards and next to our schools, where our children are learning and playing, where the environment is thriving, animals, wetlands. It's a need, but it is not a need here in our community. And I appreciate everyone's support. I really, really do. Thank you.
Thank you, Desiree. James Delay.
Good evening. My name's James Delay. I live at two, four, six, one, seven, one sixty-eight Place Southeast. With my wife. Um, my plan was to actually speak last. I don't know if you guys are familiar with me, but I am the person who found out about this, created the Facebook. Page that detailed all the. Dangers related to these types of facilities. Basically, uh, I'll just start off DB reports. Uh, he's saying it's gonna be fifty DB. Just so you guys know that. Uh, this facility is on the board. It's just outside of King County and it borders our six zoned residential homes and also. Is on, uh, is shares border with our five zoned, uh, five acre more homes. Uh, the DB, uh, limits for the R six and that's. Elementary school are forty-nine during the day, or sorry, they're forty-nine at night. Where the neighbors just exactly to the north of this facility. It's actually thirty-nine at night because they're considered rural. Um, so it's actually lower than their fifty. And I wanted to address, uh. And you can find on my, on the Facebook group I. Uh, created, there are. I'm gonna say. At least ten different sound studies for these types of development where they paid a mentioning firm to come and do it. And what they do when they do these studies is they say, okay, here's all the houses that are here. Here's all the houses that are here. We'll put up microphones with the people's permission or they put them in the street. And they measure the sound based off of what the manufacturer's specs are, uh, for how loud each item will be. Um, most of the sounds, uh, are somewhere unfiltered in the ninety dB, uh, range. There was a recent study that I just shared recently. Eastern Washington Solar and Battery Energy Storage Facility, uh, where they actually said that the overall sound would be a hundred and sixty dBs. Granted, this is unmitigated. Um, what they didn't mention during this meeting, which we've heard often is a lot of these facilities put in eight to ten foot wall. As a sound barrier and also a shrapnel barrier. Usually they make it about twelve inches thick to block any explosions. Most of the homes in this area are all two stories, so the sound will travel directly over these, uh. These walls and also the, the terrain of this property is sloped. It goes from five hundred and I think it's twenty feet down to about four hundred and eighty feet. So, uh, battery container at five hundred and twenty feet. Going over a ten foot wall at four eighty, you'll have direct line of impact to the houses for both shrapnel or gases or also, uh, noise. Um, moving on, uh, the fires, there's been five LFP, uh, base fires so far, uh, in the last two years. Um, I posted that on my Facebook group as well. Um, in one of the fires in China, uh. There were two, two firemen died in the fire, uh, because of the explosion. And a fire in Australia. Uh, at a university, they had a small, a small little battery, LFP battery setup. Uh, the fireman was knocked out the door. Um, and he was okay. Um. PSC, they're talking about our need for this. Yes, there's a future need. Um, PSC in their documents, also shared, uh, said that. By twenty thirty, we need one thousand. Megawatts of power of battery storage. Um, this facility is two hundred megawatts, so basically over twenty percent of our total need. Uh, and then by twenty forty-five, the, the, the energy storage need is eighteen hundred megawatts. Uh, so basically. We're still a, a large fraction of that by putting it next to a middle school. Um, finally, Tracy Kui is the person in the permitting office. For King County that you need to email to get on the notification list, uh, if you want to be notified of any hearings or anything else. Um, this is the wrong location for a facility like this. Children should not be subject to potential death.
Thank you, James. While I know that everybody likes to clap and I appreciate that, um, I would refrain from clapping so we can get through everybody. Thank you. Uh, Stan Prescott.
Hi, my name is Stan Prescott. I've been a resident of Covington for forty years, so. It's changed a lot. Anyway, uh, I'm, I'm not a big green virgin person, so take what I'm gonna tell you. My concern, I guess, is more on the safety side. In that. Proximity of Matson to this thing, they're very short distance. Right? We're not talking miles, we're talking feet. How do we? Get the warning to, when the fire happens to that school in time? To not have these gases. Get into the building. That's my. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Sarah. Osga. Did I pronounce that right? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Osga. I live at two, three, one, one, four Southeast, one hundred and sixty-seven Place. And. In Maple Valley. Um, I work in the solar and that soaring industry. I have about sixteen years. Uh, I came here tonight because I knew that there was gonna be a lot of people concerned about safety and I didn't know if there was anybody but the benefactors of the product. Luckily, I, uh, you have an incredible resource, uh, Dr. Stilke here, um, that can speak to one of the safety. Elements of it. One thing that. Has not. Been mentioned, uh, that I think is important. Everybody is talking about what tests, you know, when are these test results coming? And there's one test in particular that, that. I'm hoping is being done, uh, that can answer a lot of these questions. And Dr. Stilke mentioned part of it is a U L, U L ninety-five forty. That's a standard that, uh. Everyone designs their energy storage equipment to make sure it's safest and it's not gonna blow up in the field, right? There's another test called ninety-five forty-eight. Which actually takes. The system and it tries to make it fail. It, it tries to get into thermal runaway and let's see what happens. You can see these things explode. You find out at what temperature and under what conditions do these systems fail. So when these testings are done, we know, we know what's gonna happen. Now, a container to a container may not have happened yet. That could be a problem that we do need to get. It's not. It's not something that is unheard of, especially with the attacks that we've had on power stations. So. These systems can be very, very safe. I sell them, I design them, I build them. But. They need to have the testing done and understood and then implemented a plan. Cause that standard ninety-five forty-eight doesn't tell you what to do, how to keep the firefighter safe. All it does is it says, this is what's gonna happen. So then you have to get the fire department. In the planning, in the developing. And teach them how to stay safe and how not to have somebody blown up. But that's the kind of testing that's needed. If it's not here today, if we don't have it. And there's not a lot to really talk about this. We don't know. We don't know. So that's what I wanted to contribute today. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Kim.
Hello, my name is Joshua Kim and my address is one, six, two, 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 Southeast, two hundred and fifty-first Street. Um. And thank you so much for all your time and your questions are definitely something that I had in mind as well and you guys just took it out of my mouth. But, um, yeah, I recently became a board member for my community and. The way our streets are laid out and we have about a hundred thirty-five households alone in that community. But if we extend that, we also have another hundred twenty-four, we have. Seventy-four more. We also have two more residents, uh, coming in that's coming. So just in that little, you know, area alone, right by Matson Middle School. We have such a street where, you know, I kind of worry about the evacuation process and I'm also worried about the off-gassing. Um, as well, because you know, these things, I mean, I'm in support for clean energy. But you know, for the location being so close to the residential areas that are so dense and the streets are not. Very, you know, easy to evacuate very quickly because I. From my research, at least it takes three minutes for that gas to just spread quite rapidly, depending on the weather and such. So that's kind of my concern that I wanted to address today. And yeah, I'm very thankful that you guys are more than willing to, you know. Move this forward to a public hearing and I would love to be part of that for Matson. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Linda and Tom O'Connell.
Good evening. I'm Tom O'Connell. I live at, uh, one, six, seven, zero, one, Southeast, two fifty-first Place. It's about, uh, just a couple of hundred feet from the site. Um, a couple of things that came up, uh, listening and I hope I heard it correctly. The RFP was, uh, the sighting was driven. Primarily by proximity to an existing substation. It was a cost consideration. I think I heard that the RFP was cost-based. And this causes me concern about. Low bid. I mean, have we ever? Had to address a low bid situation that didn't work out. Um, best bid would have probably been the. Procurement method for this design. And that has a, that's a concern to me. The second concern that I had is they're in their, uh, slideshow. Side number nine did even address the potential for terrorists. These units may be contained. But terrorists are becoming more and more sophisticated. They're not gonna go for a pop here and a pop there. They're going to up the ante and they're going to use more severe. Methods. And we could be talking about. The whole system, not individual units. And that's a concern to me, so I just wanted to make sure that this is vetted out in the open. Subjects for discussion. Uh, in any event, I think that's all I had to say that I didn't hear already this evening and thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you, Tom. Uh, Nicole Grant. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Nicole Grant. I live in Kent at nine, six, five, three, zero, Lake Fenwick Road South. And I'm here representing my union. I am a twenty-year member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. And we were asked by Tenasket to come today and speak a little bit about what. Members of our union do and, um, how we're trained. So, um. We go through a five-year apprenticeship. Some people go through a two-year apprenticeship to do, uh, the data aspects. But we are the highest trained electrical workforce in the world. And we take our own safety very seriously and we take safety in our community very seriously. And. In a situation like this with a project of this caliber. It's very important that only the most skilled workforces be employed. And so I wanted to vouch for the fact. That in this case, that is what's being done. We appreciate Tenasket that they. Got in contact with us early. They reached out to us about whether we had manpower that was. Trained to the standards that they demand that would be available for a project like this. And I want to say that there is. Um. You know, and like I've, I've really enjoyed, um, hearing from this community and, and from the council members here tonight about. Your concerns and thoughts about this project. Um, this is stuff that I want to bring back to our union and talk about as well, so. I appreciate being a part of the conversation and. You know, it's. We want to be able to have solar and we want to be able to have wind. Which I want. Battery storage is a part of that because there is not sun shining twenty-four hours a day. And the wind doesn't blow for hours a day. And having energy storage, whether it's battery storage or pump storage. Is part of what makes renewable energy possible. And so it's a lot to, um. Address with climate change. We have a lot to overcome, but, um. I will say that for our small part as the electrical workers that install. Developments like this, that, um. That we take it very seriously and that we're the best and that. We would invite anybody who's interested to visit our training facilities and see for yourself the standards that we adhere to. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Dean Payton. Okay, thank you. Leslie Hamada. Welcome, Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner. I'm Leslie Hamada. I reside at two, eight, zero, two, six, one hundred and eighty-ninth Avenue. Southeast. I, my address is Camden, Covington. Um, but I do pay taxes in unincorporated King County. And that is the regulation tonight. Um. Um, again, I'm a resident of the area, a community volunteer and neighbor and a member of the Kent School Board. I want to be clear, I'm not speaking on behalf. Of the Kent School Board here tonight. But I was elected by this community to represent them. I'm here because I am opposed to the construction and operation of this facility in our neighborhood. It feels as though this project is being done to us and not with us. There is nobody in this community who actively wants this facility built here. The facility is next to a middle school. It is in a residential neighborhood and it's going to impact a community. There are potential health impacts, safety impacts, fire impacts. And significant noise impacts that will drastically decrease our community's quality of life. Additionally, it, it, it just is not the best use of land, particularly of this size. And there is zero community benefit. When you permit a project this size, we must remember, we never get the land back. We never get to say, we wish we had done something differently with some community benefit instead. When it's gone. It's gone. On behalf of the land, animals and our kids. Our neighbors. And our entire community. I am asking that this project be paused. Our community be more included in the conversation and stop doing things to us. And start doing things with us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Taryn Pfeifer. Welcome, Taryn.
Thank you so much. Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Taryn Pfeifer. I live at one, six, two, one, two, Southeast, two hundred and forty-ninth Place. That is in Tamarack Bridge. We are right next door, right at Kitty Quarter, across the street. Um, from this proposal site. Um, I'm a registered nurse and when I think about. What that means is registered nurse invested in data, invested in, uh, research. Any new process procedure, you have to have the data backup and the time length to do so. I look at pharmaceuticals. We don't just willy-nilly administer new medications without looking at the efficacy. Timestamp as far as what's the side effects, what's the mitigation for those side effects? I'm not seeing any data in response to what actually are the concerns? What's the facts as far as fire? What's the actual active sites? Something that I did dig up, uh, this is a, it was prepared for the US Department of Energy. It's, uh, was in February of twenty twenty by Pacific Northwest. I can get that to all of you if you like. Um, it was a clean energy fund, uh, performance test result. So in digging in that, I found there was four sites in Washington State or Besses. Um, these, uh, storage facilities. One was in Pullman, surrounded by miles, miles of farmland, no residents in sight. You have another one up in Glacier, Glacier, Washington, far north in the mountains. Again, super isolated, low population density. That one actually has since been closed, I saw. Uh, when this was looked at, you know, this was written in twenty twenty, that's now been closed. Then there's two in Everett, both in, uh. Oh, uh, zoning zones for, uh, business. So right, one's right near Boeing, so definitely non-residential. All four of these, why at that time when these are being built? And again, it's the last five years we're seeing these are actually coming up. In twenty twenty, this is showing there was only four sites they were using as a study here in Washington. So now with this, those were isolated, they were carefully placed and yet. And yet now we are literally, I heard the word guinea pig, I'm thinking to place this near a middle school. Related homes. I have two and a half year old twins. This is just shocking to me. I don't see how we can proceed without actual data, actual statistics to back up. What is the plan and what is the risk? And I want to know that the implementation as far as fire protection, gas evacuation, it's solid. It's founded in years of data. I expect that. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you, Taryn. Jamie Harker, I have you as a maybe. Thank you. Skipping down to Dorothy Sika, maybe. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dorothy Sika and I live in 16304 Southeast 251st Street, right across from Matson Middle School also. Um, I've been living in Covington. Me and my husband has been and my family has been living there about 17 years. We are raising three children there. And I would just want to state that I opposed to the building of these facilities. Like many others say, you know, concerns including fire and noise. The noise is right next to a middle school and how's that going to affect the learning and the teaching of the of the school there? Noise can also trigger my brain and other health issues. I did this lots of solid research on that. Um, the the best, the company that builds it and whoever, you know, this gentleman's here and the company, you know, their best interest is to their company and to having this facility built. But I trust that Ms. Mayor and all these council members here, your best interest is for us, is for the city of Covington, is for the families and the business in Covington. Your vision and your goals is right there, including establish a healthy and safe environment. Safety. And I just don't see how the risk factor, all the data you can do, all the kind of every single safety precaution is too too much of a risk and too new to put it right next to middle school and right into neighborhoods. So I just ask you all to serve, continue to serve the city by, you know, voicing your opinions to the King County, the people that actually going to make the decision on this. I pray that you will support us, keep this community safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Tim Sika. Okay, thank you. Teresa Turner. Welcome.
Thank you. I apologize for my telephone. I used to teach I used to teach high school, so kind of shows, you know, that would be common in the classroom. Thank you, Covington City Council members for having this, for hosting this. And thank you also to the company who has presented this information. I personally am not against this technology. I see the merit of having this kind of facility, but just not next to Matson Middle School. I also live at 25009 171st Avenue Southeast. So I'm about a half mile from Matson. I walk my dog from the my house to the light at Matson and back. It's one mile. So I do that a couple of times every day. And my concern is really with the students. We have fragile students at Matson. They're very sensitive to noises. I believe that this noise will not only affect the students at Matson, but also us in the neighborhood. But also, if you know that block, we have Matson, right? Half a mile over is Kentwood. A mile up the road is Covington Elementary and on the same block, on the other side on Wax Road is Crestwood Elementary. So any type of disaster that would happen would affect more than just our Matson Middle School, which is about 800 students and staff. I think that your call to have King County hold a hearing here in Covington is a good one. And I'd also have a request to you, members of our city council. And that is, I understand that the Renton City Council had a similar facility being planned in their community. And they voted and made a public statement against that facility and it was stopped. I know that this is not something that you have control over, but if you were to make a public statement, I think carry a lot of weight. And I really appreciate the time and energy that you have put into hearing from us. So thank you very much for your time.
You bet. Thank you, Teresa. Next is Tricia Baker. Okay, thank you. Lonnie Orson. Welcome.
Hello, name is Lonnie Olson, 2492 361st Place Southeast, Tamarack Bridge, right across. Couple of the other things that had been mentioned about exposures, other things such as the the batteries, it wasn't was you know, just other environmental, you know, the the animals, the wildlife and other such that would be also happening. But oil spills and other things, I send a lot of teams across the nation to do these batteries replacements installs and stuff like that. Happens all the time. They're all runaways. Heating issues, storms, down power outage that closes the areas, these things explode. They cause damage all over the place. They evacuate areas. You know, this something this large can do that damage. So contaminations and other such have that. Something here that was also a worry is the the area has the electromagnetic radiation that could cause headaches, sleep deprivation and also cancer. Is this contained vibrations of the land and everything else that will cause property damage? Stuff as such is that hasn't been brought up in consideration. So what what is being brought forth outside of just noise and property value, which I care about myself, that two children here in the area, it's going to be going to the school and this is all concerns. Knowing that all this, these fire teams that we call moving around, replacing the stuff. I don't want to live near these places. I see all the catastrophes happen throughout the nation. This is not something I want near me or the schools. So I would oppose this. Also, part of the union, local 46 that was brought up, yeah, we have very well trained people. Accidents happen on every job site. If everything was perfectly done, we wouldn't have problems anywhere. There's accidents everywhere. Nothing is 4100%. We don't want even that one small percent happen around our children and our homes where we live. So, thank you. I oppose.
Thank you, Lonnie. Joe Principi. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. Good evening, Joe Principi. I've been a resident here for 28 years. I live at 22608 156th Avenue Southeast. With my wife, my son attended Matson Middle School. In my profession, I'm in commercial management. I deal with state and county bids quite frequently to resident to resonate with this gentleman's statement on low bid. It's very characteristic of the state and the county to choose low bidder. I don't think a project of this nature warrants the low bid. But subsequent to that, when we exceed the budget, who's going to pay the balance? That's my question. And that's, I guess, my comment for observation. In addition, I'd like to suggest that maybe the city of Covington prepare an investigative committee to do the due diligence on where else in the country these facilities have been put in residential neighborhoods, because I don't have the confidence in King County to do that work for us. Lastly, I'm assuming that this technology is going to be fed to us through existing transmission lines. As a resident here for 28 years, whenever my power has failed, it's due to a blowdown. So I don't see the value in having a offsite's power storage that's going to be fed to my house through a regular transmit transmission line that more than likely is going to be out due to trees blowing over the line. So I would like to see some clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Kyle Lipidab. Kyle still here? Oh, there you are. It doesn't say, so I'm giving you the option, Kyle. You left it blank.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I think not very often we get so many people here, right? But the point is, let's make it clear. We're not talking about a facility, we're not opposing a battery storage facility. We're talking about this facility literally next to the middle school. So for example, well, I live in Covington for the past 11 years, I'm sorry. But let's say if I want to put a concrete factory in my backyard, great, right? It'll be awesome. It's not a place for it. So let's see, let me let me remind you, all of you actually. When you ran the C public office, all of you promised to serve this community. And now you have the chance. So what we're asking, well, what I'm asking, I'm pretty sure a lot of people who's here will join me, that not just to oppose this factory at the wrong spot. Maybe maybe the time is right, but it's a completely wrong spot, but also to take it with us much further to the King County and and explain to them, your level, that this is wrong. This is not about energy. This is about their kids. This is about our communities. This is about the people who lives there. It's not about storage of of the batteries or whatever it is. I mean, no offense now. But they can do that. Yeah, we'll agree. Yeah, climate change, environment, great, but can we please just do that in the specific locations that designate for that? And the danger out of this, I mean, I just dig in in about a couple hours ago and to contain the fire it's extremely hard and almost impossible. So again, I appeal to you, please, their council, please consider to join your community, your citizens, your children's to oppose this factory on the higher level of King County. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle. Next, we will move on to our virtual attendees. And the first one, phone number ending in 7973. And that it. Okay. I'll come back to you after I've done these online. So 7973, go ahead. State your name and address, please.
My name is Ross Principi. I live at 22608 also. And basically, I just have a couple of comments and concerns that I think have been gaffed over a little bit. The first one is having gone to Matson Middle School myself. Matson Middle School is an outside school, meaning the hallways are undercover. There's no walls. Basically, you just have the classrooms that are inside. So students are constantly outside all day. And another thing is, is the watershed for Seattle, Lake Young's is less than two miles away. So the in the event of a fire or an explosion, what's going to happen when there's, you know, toxic fallout falling into, you know, Lake Young's watershed? How is that going to affect the greater population of Seattle? How is that going to affect the people that have wells that share a water table with Lake Young? And how is that going to affect the Cedar River that's also less than three miles away? That provides, you know, water to the Puget Sound and thus our ecological climate. A lot of people around Covington have crops, have livestock. They use a lot of that stuff to feed themselves and to make a living. So in the event of an ecological disaster, when everyone has to evacuate like East Palestine, the train derailment in Ohio, how is this going to affect people's lives? And is it really worth it to risk that for something that we might not even get the benefit to use? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jamison online.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, welcome, Jamison.
Thank you. My name's Jameson K. I'm a disabled service member, served in the Marine Corps. I am multiple different areas and I think the biggest thing that brings this home for me is I finally decide decided to call this my house. Sorry, my address is 163033 Southeast 232nd Street, Kent, Washington. My address says Kent. But in actuality, I'm in unincorporated King County. And I don't know where to where to turn to. Understand, I believe Mr. Mr. Dunn is there as well in the meeting. But I do want to say to this council, I greatly appreciate you standing up for my rights as I can't do it by myself and fight that fight. So so thank you for standing up for the people that are not represented by a actual city but are only seen underneath the county. Inviting for that, right? I think the biggest thing is that as a property owner, I do have the right to quiet enjoyment of my property. And I believe that is a federal common law thing that as a property owner, I have quiet enjoyment. Quiet enjoyment is not just purely the noise what you hear, but quiet enjoyment is also the peace and love that you feel by the overall look and feel of the property. It was just yesterday, I was working on my fence to help keep my chickens in that we eat our eggs, fresh eggs from. And I looked up and there was a probably three or four bald eagles just flying overhead. A lot of the people in this area, in this unincorporated area in Seuss Creek rely rely on a and enjoy the wildlife that's available. From my understanding, the backend of this property on the east side is a wetland set aside. How is that going to change? What what is going to be the impact to a wetland area? We're here in the Pacific Northwest where we love our trees. We love our wildlife. How does this make sense? How does this make sense? Going back to quiet enjoyment. I spend my money in Covington. I shop at the Fred Meyer there. I eat at the New Firehouse Subs. Love it. I don't know if I can continue to go down 164th every single day and see that the wall, the what the the wall, I, you know, we're talking about the different size, the eight, 10 foot tall walls. You know, potential for more? That's that's crazy. That's I just don't understand it. The wall, why? Why should we look at a wall? You know, and I appreciate the abatement of like using a wall to keep the noise down, but do we want to see that? Do we want to see that? And that kind of brings me to the next point of what it, how are they going about this? It's in King County. Why would they pick King County in an unincorporated area? Well, it's not represented accurately. You saw Renton. Renton said, no, no, thank you. Not here, not my city. We're on the border of Covington. Right? In an unincorporated area, we're we're not accurately represented. I have one person to turn to and that's Mr. Dunn. But I do appreciate this council standing up for my right. This is an area I want to live in. I'm done. I'm done moving. This is where I call a community. And I think just coming together and having this conversation is a community I want to be a part of. And it feels good to know that we're all standing together and want our rights at a federal level and state level protected. And thank you for leading the charge.
Thank you, Jamison. Next is Scott Otte. You're on mute, sir. Scott, you still wish to speak? Okay, I see you lowered your hand. Okay, I'll allow, we are running out of time for public comment. I'll allow one more comment. Go ahead. Okay, I see you lowered your hand. Okay, I'll allow, uh, we are running out of time for public comment. I'll allow one more comment. Go ahead. Yes.
My, my name is Rassuslov. Um, I, I stay on the twenty four nine twenty six, uh, southeast one seventy. Um, my comment is, uh, they never told us about any, um, uh, what's it called? Um, just give me a second. Yeah, they never told us about any sites they have, uh, any developments in like, let's say Arizona, middle of nowhere. Um, where, where they had, uh, decades of, uh, um, um. Studies done and like, hey, we have this, that, this much of gases emitting every single day. Um, and we have this, uh, type of runouts on this site in this period of like, let's say five decades, right? It's, they, they doing this right here and literally they're doing this, um, uh, we are, we, we're like a big, biggie, um. Um, they, they doing like a research right now in the middle of a huge neighborhood. Um, then, uh, just, just one, one little, uh, they, they never said about, uh, this facility. How much is it emitting in, uh, in, um, toxic, um, uh, when they charge and recharge? Uh, how, how much toxins are going in, in atmosphere? Um, they never said about, uh, what type of toxins will come out in, in the, in the, in the, in the. In, uh, like, uh, in the, in the, in the first stage of runout, uh, how much time we, we have. Well, to, um, uh, until we, we gonna, uh, we gonna do something about it. Because if those toxins are laying down on the floor and they going to our homes, I'm only three homes away. Like, that's, that's very, very crazy. And I have two kids, my wife, and I know it's, I don't want this next to my house. Um. Um, the other question is, they never told about, uh, where they build these containers and what type of containers they're going to put in. Uh, then, uh, they never said, hey, in case we gonna put those containers on, on the side, if, if we drop it, what's going to happen? A simple example, I was fixing my son's toy six months ago. And I was, uh, working with a hammer. And accidentally I hit a battery. I had a runoff in, right in my garage. I almost burned my house. Have you ever had one? One runoff? It's crazy. I thought I'll, I'll just carry it out outside. No, it's not. As soon as I took it in my hands, it burned my two fingers. This finger and this finger right away. I did not know what to do. I was start kicking it because I, I really wasn't in the, like, in the middle of craziness, you know? Um. Then, uh, I'm sorry, uh, I don't remember your names, my, my bad. Um. They said they're gonna build this for a flip. So that's mean they're gonna build it and then, then they're gonna sell it. Because I never heard anything saying about who is gonna run this. Are they the people who are gonna run this? Or are they building it and then they, they, they giving the project to someone? Who's gonna be running? And I never, never got this, I'm sorry. If I can have any more, uh, answers on this, I'll be more than happy to give you my, my email. Because I don't, I don't understand who's gonna be running it. And why not put this, uh, facility in Seattle? We have so many buildings, so many businesses closed down in Seattle. I don't need to say the names of the businesses. We all know. We have so many businesses closing. Just tear them down, build facility there. It's a part of King County. Let them do it there. I have nothing against it. Uh. And they never said how many times they're gonna charge and discharge. And how long the noise will be, uh, in the, in the neighborhood. And, um, the other thing is, uh, I just Googled it and it says, uh. Uh, the, the decibel is a fifty decibel noise around the facility. And, uh, the burst you're tripping, it's a fifty decibel.
Your remarks, time is up, so hurry it. Okay, all right. Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. Okay, we're running out of time, so go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for taking your time. First of all, thank you to the council. Um, all of your questions are appreciated, in particular, uh, Councilman Saltis. Smith. Joe. And, uh, uh, Mayor Wagner, thank you, everyone for your comments and in particular for your, um, your comments. I just have a couple of quick questions, um. I'll, I'll be, I'll just skip to my main one since time is short. Um, Tommy. You said that more power facilities would be required. My question for you is if so, will they also be built next to middle schools? And if not, why does this one have to be built next to a middle school? Will they also be built next to established neighborhoods? And if not, why does this one have to be built next to an established neighborhood? Will they also be built adjacent to the city but outside of it? To limit property taxes and to limit accountability to a city? If not, why does this one have to be built? I have other questions about. The impact of high tension power lines. And, uh, property evaluations, but all in there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
May I please get a name for the record?
Okay. Neil Monker, two five one two one, hundred and sixty first place southeast Covington.
Thank you. That concludes all of our time for our, uh, public comment period. I want to thank. Each and every one of you for attending tonight, whether you commented or not. But anybody that does have future comments, also please make sure and send them to King County. As they are the, um, going through the approval or non-approval process. And then if we can get a public hearing with King County out in this area, which we will ask for. I encourage you all to attend that as well to share your comments. And with that, I will conclude this public comment period. There will be a second opportunity later on this evening. And with that, we are going to take a five-minute recess and, uh, you can stop the recording. Thank you. Welcome back to our Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, June thirteenth. Uh, let's move into approval of consent agenda, which is consisting of items C one through C five.
So moved, second?
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Can we, uh, close the back door? Thank you. Next up is new business item one, consider a resolution adopting the six-year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-nine. Transportation Improvement Program. Mr. Lindskop, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I cleared the room.
Yeah.
So tonight we're, uh, coming before you to consider resolution to adopt our, our proposed six-year tip. Uh, we had an amendment where we added, uh, pedestrian bridge, uh, preliminary engineering. Um, to, to the stip or to our transportation improvement plan so we could obligate funds. Uh, and start moving forward with that work. Uh, this also included, uh, an amendment to the SEPA and I believe it's still out for comment period. Um, so with all that said, uh. We would recommend, uh. Recommend the adoption of the six-year tip. Uh, if there's any comments, I can take them down.
Council, have any questions for Bob? Look for a motion to approve.
So moved, second, okay.
Okay, been moved and seconded to pass a resolution adopting the city of Covington. Two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-nine, six-year transportation improvement program. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, uh, I just am happy to say, see all these projects on here. I'm also happy to say that in about two years, there's going to be a couple knocked off of here that have been on there since I got on council. So it's really nice to be able to see some more getting crossed off and I'm looking forward to that and this is a great plan for us to have over the next few years.
Thank you, Bill. Would you like to speak to your second?
Actually, have to say, Jennifer, speak this, a topic for me.
Um, it ditto what Joe said. Thank you very much for your team's continued work on this.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass a resolution adopting the city of Covington, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-nine, six-year transportation improvement. Program. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It has passed. Thank you.
And Mayor, I'd just like to add that, uh, the adoption will become official at the end of the SEPA amendment comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is new business item number two, discuss the selection of citizen and honorary citizen of the year. Regan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, each year the city council selects, uh, citizen honorary citizen of the year for their contributions to the community. Uh, as in previous years, we advertised for nominations. Uh, it was open between May fifteenth. And June sixth, uh, we received several, uh, you have those, uh, before you. And so now it's, uh, up to council to select, uh, citizen and honorary citizen of the year that will honor later this summer.
Great. Thank you. Uh, let's start with honorary citizen of the year first. We have two nominees. Uh, Meg Heron, who has two nominees for her, and then Jennifer Liggett, who also was chosen in twenty twenty. Council, wish to take any action? Yes, Beth?
I would like to actually reopen the nomination period for a few more weeks. I mean. We only had a few people nominated for each and typically we had six or seven at least. I don't know if that would be an option. It's, it's brought up as an alternative here. But I don't know what that impact can be to the staff.
We could reopen it. This is actually, I, I think fairly typical of the amount of nominations that we received.
For honorary, yes.
Yeah, maybe other years there were.
Okay.
Maybe there might have been one or two years where there was a spike, but, um, whatever council wants to do.
Okay.
We can make happen.
All goes. Just thought I'd bring that up as an option.
House? Debbie?
Well, I'll, I'll say that I, I feel that we have. Two very good nominations, one almost being sort of disqualified because of being a past recipient.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think if we were to reopen it, we might continue to get some nominations for Meg Heron.
I would agree.
And I, I, I'm happy to speak to, um, what, what Meg and Jennifer both did was phenomenal at the beginning of the school year. Um, they have both. Okay. I, I will make a, a motion then that we, um, that we select Meg Heron as the honorary citizen of the year for twenty twenty. Three.
I second.
Excuse me? Okay, is there a second?
I just second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry. So I've been to many, um. Uh, community events over the last several months where both Meg and Jennifer were recognized. And then so it's sad that, um, it probably wouldn't be right to recognize them both. Um, since Jennifer has been a previous, um. Uh. Awardee. Uh, again, what, what happened at the beginning of the school year with a grassroots, we gotta feed these kids. Was just unlike something I've ever seen and I had the privilege of getting to help pack the food and, uh, meeting Meg. And, um, she is a powerful, uh, resource for our local community.
Yes, would you like to speak to your second?
Um. I guess just to add, it, it was a profound impact and an unexpected event and. Inspiring to others to see that you see a need, fill a need and anyone can do it. And it doesn't have to be of an agency or your government or a nonprofit that's already in place. Like, she was like, this needs to be done and she and one other person just spearheaded this whole effort. And so to recognize that, it, I think is, is, um, something we should take advantage of.
Great. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to name Meg Heron as Covington's honorary citizen of the year for two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to Meg. Next up is to, uh, select Covington's citizen of the year. We have four nominations. We have Linda F., Jennifer Bosom. Gail Ackerson and Kathy Chase. This council wish to, um, make a motion.
I'm going to nominate Jennifer Bosom for citizen of the year.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to nominate Jennifer Bosom as citizen of the year. Are there any other nominations? Hey, Beth, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Um. Yes, I, I don't know her first name, um, but just based on, um, the. The nomination that was given and the list of, um, projects and, you know, the impact. That Jennifer has had on the community. Um, and we also know that she raised a wonderful leader, uh, who's on our council. So, um. I can see that, that her impact on the communities, both past, present and future.
I think Jennifer would like to speak to your second.
Yeah, I would. I'm running that clothing bank. It takes a ton of work. I have only volunteered at it and done little snippets. Um, I cannot imagine moving it, uh, but, uh. The impact on the number of, of families, I mean, it's not just little kids, big kids come in there too. And it's families from all walks of life have access to this clothing and they do such. A thoughtful and considerate job of trying to make sure it's good stuff that kids and young adults want to wear. And, you know, that it's. That it's a shopping experience and that there's not shame involved and it's just a really great program and she's. We're lucky to have her in Covington doing great work in a local school as well, so, um, I fully support that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to name Jennifer Bosom as Covington's citizen of the year for two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to Jennifer. Thank you. Next is new business item number three, consider a resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-four work plan. And, excuse me, two thousand twenty-four operating budget for South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. Claire Goodman, Goodwin, welcome.
Thank you. We've got some slides here. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Claire Goodwin. And I am the executive manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip for short. This is my first time presenting to you, um, so thank you so much for having me. Um, and I'm excited to present, uh, the Skip Executive Board's recommended twenty twenty-four, uh, work plan and budget to you this evening. So Skip was formed in twenty nineteen through an interlocal agreement between several city governments in King County. To address the housing needs of South King County as a unified, coordinated coalition. And Covington was a founding member. Skip currently has eleven member jurisdictions, uh, which are listed on the slide. And Covington is represented by your very own council member Christina Saltis, um, on the Skip Executive Board. And Skip member cities are united under a common purpose and goal to ensure the availability of housing for all income levels of residents in South King County. Skip's mission is South King County jurisdictions working together and sharing resources. To create a coordinated, comprehensive and equitable approach to increasing housing stability, reducing homelessness. And producing and preserving quality affordable housing in South, in South King County. Even though the executive board has taken action and approved the twenty twenty-four work plan and budget. Our interlocal agreement requires that the legislative bodies of our member jurisdictions also approve the annual work plan and budget. Before it becomes effective. So the work plan and budget are key documents that provide guidance and serve as a roadmap for Skip staff in the coming year. Because of the importance of this document, we spent several months developing it to ensure alignment with the Skip Board's priorities. So beginning in February of this year, the executive and advisory boards completed a survey which established their initial key priorities. We then held an interactive in-person workshop with the executive board in March where their priorities were further refined. Um, a draft was then developed and reviewed with the advisory board and the Skips. Uh, Skip staff work group made up of staff from each member jurisdiction. And Daphne Hernandez, Associate Planner, serves as your representative on the staff work group. Suggestions and feedback were then incorporated. Uh, the draft was then presented to the executive board for their feedback and review. The draft was then presented to the executive board for their feedback and review in April, and the document was further refined. A revised draft was shared with the executive board to review with member councils as needed. The executive board adopted the final two thousand twenty-four work plan and budget at their meeting. And we are now here. Tonight is our final step, seeking concurrence on the recommendation from you. So most of the content in the work plan has been carried over from previous years. But this year, our four goals are fund the expansion and preservation of affordable housing, develop policies to expand and preserve affordable housing, serve as advocate for South King County, and manage operations and administration. Each goal in the work plan has corresponding actions that support the goal. And each goal has corresponding indicators that will help us know we're achieving the goals. Priority level symbology has been added this year to easily see where this item lands in comparison with other items in the goal. And I'm not going to go into details on the action items or indicators because it's very lengthy. But if you're interested, you can view those in your agenda packet in the work plan. So the Skip twenty, the twenty twenty-four Skip operating budget totals four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars. Most of Skip's expenses go towards the salary and benefits of two staff, myself included, Endorseal Plants, who's here, you tonight, program coordinator. There are no new expenditures proposed in this budget. Our two thousand twenty-four budgeted expenses that are impacted by inflation are increasing five percent over this year. These include salaries, benefits, professional services, and travel. Regarding revenues, our operating budget is funded solely from Skip member contributions and are based on population tiers, which we'll go over on the next slide. No member jurisdiction is moving into a new population tier this year, but the board adopted a policy in July twenty twenty-one to increase member contributions by fifteen percent each year through two thousand twenty-six to work towards a balanced budget. This means member contributions for two thousand twenty-four will be fifteen percent higher than last year, and we will look more closely at that in a couple slides. We are continuing to spend down the cost savings from the first two years of Skip to balance additional contribution increases for members. So this slide shows the Skip population tiers established in the interlocal agreement and the member contribution by year that incorporates the fifteen percent increase each year. A caveat to this table, in two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six, if there is an interest in exploring additional staff capacity or other new expenditures, member contributions may be higher than what is listed, but that is a discussion for future years. This table shows the state's Office of Financial Management, or OFM, population data in two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two by each member jurisdiction. For King County, I only have the unincorporated South King County estimate for two thousand eighteen. The number listed for two thousand twenty-two is the entire unincorporated area. For the two thousand twenty-four budget, I'm using two thousand twenty-two population data to establish which year your jurisdiction falls into. This means no, no member jurisdiction change population tiers this year, since we don't have the OFM data for two thousand twenty-three until June thirtieth. As you can see, South King County is growing, including Covington. And here is a snapshot of the projected budget from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-six. This assumes no new activities or expenses. You can see that we are quickly spending down our cost savings, and we will likely and will likely be exhausted by two thousand twenty-six. We want to ensure our fund balance is stable in order to be prepared for any emergencies, so maintaining at minimum ten percent of our expenses. The fund balance is my goal in future years, and preferably closer to twenty-five percent. Your city's member contributions would be eleven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars for two thousand twenty-four, up from nine thousand, nine hundred and nineteen in two thousand twenty-three. In conclusion, I am seeking your support to adopt the two thousand twenty-four Skip work plan and two thousand twenty-four operating budget per our interlocal agreement requirements. And on a separate but related topic as part of the work plan, Skip is hoping to begin pooling house bill fifteen ninety funds to support the Skip Housing Capital Fund with those jurisdictions who have expressed an interest, Covington being one of those cities. I'll be presenting to the Skip Executive Board for their review and feedback this week, followed by working with jurisdictions who are interested in contributing. The intent is to pool these funds this year among participating cities to fund affordable housing projects in South King County, following our successful first year of funding through pooled sales tax credit receipts among eight of the ten member jurisdictions. Your council took up this conversation last year in March. At that meeting, you discussed your interest in holding on to a portion of your revenue potentially for Skip and other organizations at a future date. And Skip would love to incorporate this revenue into this year's housing capital fund, which begins July twenty-four. And if Covington is still supportive of pooling with Skip, I would need council to take action establishing your intent to provide a certain percentage of funds to Skip for purposes of contributing to the housing capital fund before July twenty-first. I know that's quick if we're going to pull funds this year. And I understand if you're interested in pooling funds, that those recommendations need to come through the Human Services Committee or Commission. And once that recommendation is considered, I would then come back with an interlocal agreement in August for your adoption, so that we're able to make funding decisions on projects. At last year's meeting, you discussed pooling fifty percent of the required amount that must support capital cost on projects for the RCW requirements. And Skip welcomes this contribution, and you would be joined by other cities contributing this funding source for the betterment of our most vulnerable residents in South King County. And pooled funds would support the construction or acquisition of affordable housing or land for these purposes, right here in South King County, for households earning up to sixty percent AMI, or the equivalent of eighty-two thousand, two hundred dollars for a household of four, and serving populations that are specified in the RCW. This is households experiencing homelessness or or at risk of homelessness, survivors of domestic violence, persons with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, seniors, and other specified populations. The funds would be made available through Skip's open funding round of the Housing Capital Fund, whereby we solicit applications for funding requests from developers, nonprofits, even local governments are eligible to apply. And the Skip Executive Board adopts guidelines and funding priorities every year, which we are currently underway with for this year's funding round. Applications are reviewed by the Skip Advisory Board, and a recommendation is made to the Skip Executive Board on which projects to fund and at what level. The executive board then makes a recommendation to the member jurisdictions, and each legislative body contributing funds takes action to approve the recommendation. In terms of other Skip members interested in pooling this specific revenue source, the house bill fifteen ninety revenue, the City of Kent has taken legislative action to commit their entire capital portion, or sixty percent of the total collected with Skip. This totals four point five million dollars available from two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, and two point three million ongoing annually. Maple Valley is currently exploring contributions to Skip, since they are our newest member. And Renton will likely work directly with their housing authority to provide those funds to them. Though Renton, I should mention, does contribute one hundred percent of the substitute house bill fourteen oh six revenue, the sales tax credit to the Housing Capital Fund. So with that, I am, I am happy to answer any questions you may have about the work plan, about the budget, or about the house bill fifteen ninety revenue.
Also, any question?
Jennifer? Just one quick one. I heard July twenty-fourth as a deadline, but when does the funding cycle begin?
So the we're currently developing the Housing Capital Fund Guidelines, which serves as our notice of funding available. And so that is the document that goes out to the public, that goes out to developers, that sees how much funding is available. So the thinking is that if we know who is interested in pooling this particular funding source, we would add that to this year's funding round. So that application process is opened through September fifteenth. So developers and others can apply by that deadline. And so the creation of the ILA in August, it's moving fast, but it's it's essentially to achieve the goal of pooling that revenue source this year. Because right now, our member jurisdictions who collect that revenue are just, you know, waiting for something to happen. Yeah.
Anybody else?
I have a question. You mentioned that you thought that funding to Skip needed to come through our, the city's human resources fund. But, okay, I was thinking I've not seen that come through that category before.
That that would be a council decision, not a commission decision.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Hold on. What is it?
The the policy states it's got to go through the Services Commission for recommendations to the council. That would go through the council.
Oh.
For fifteen ninety. That's the policy that council adopted when we first started.
Just for statement on the record, what projects are currently funded through Skip, and what projects are, is Skip currently looking at to fund with the funding that's on there? As the former board member for the City of Covington, this was always my pet peeve. So I just want to know where we're at at this point.
Yeah, where are we at at this point? Um, so so we just finished our first round successfully of the Housing Capital Fund, so the board selected two projects to fund with, I think, one point three, one point four million. One is a homeownership project, twenty units of permanently affordable homes serving income incomes from zero to thirty percent, all the way up to sixty percent AMI. There's a forty percent set aside for households experiencing homelessness. That's a Habitat for Humanity project in Buryan. And then the second project that was funded is an eighty-nine unit multifamily rental property serving folks up to sixty percent AMI as well. And so the the board is very excited to be able to to launch, launch that and finish that. And so now we're moving into our second year of funding.
Where is the rental property at?
It's also in Buryan. So, you know, our first year of making this funding available, all three projects that applied for funding were from Buryan. And that's for one of the main reasons is is Buryan adopted a housing demonstration, affordable housing demonstration program, where they lowered all kinds of different barriers to affordable housing development in the city. And so that allowed a lot of projects to move quickly. And so I think word just got out that this legal funding source was available. And, you know, I think the intention every year is that we bring more awareness about this funding source to developers, getting it on their radar so that we can have better geographic diversity of of applications to consider. Because the ultimate goal is that we're funding projects all over South King County.
Anybody else? Beth?
Without going into too much detail, I know we're we're running long on the meeting. How are you advertising these funds, funding sources? Obviously, Buryan has their culture set up so that developers are digging into that in that location.
So, yeah, so I'm part of the Public Funders Group, which works with Department of Commerce and King County Public Funders Arch. So we have this group, you know, that works together and gets the word out and promotes funding that's available. There's going to be a Public Funders Forum this Friday that folks are all speaking at. Developers are coming to learn what funding is available this year. And so Skip's funds will be advertised there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Claire, for the presentation. Council, before us is a potential to take action to approve the resolution to continue funding Skip at the level of eleven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars for the two thousand twenty-four funding cycle, as well as approve the work plan. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'm happy that projects were finally funded through Skip. I'm happy that they're working to fund more projects. And I'm happy, after repeating it for two years, that Skip is finally taking notice of those fifteen ninety funds. I know that we've been looking for reasons to use our fifteen ninety funds. I'm looking forward to you coming back and talking to us about that. So I'm very happy that we're moving in the direction I was hoping that Skip would be moving in two years.
Thank you, Jill. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Just to add to what Joe's saying, it's super exciting to see movement, and this is what we've been waiting for, and that update was fabulous, and.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Christina?
If I just may really quickly, I I too was as a as an alternate, just waiting for the pipeline, 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 pipeline. And in regards, in regards to the work plan and the funding, I do believe that this is a step in the right direction. It's not perfect. I don't think we're exactly where we want to be, but I I do believe that it's definitely a step in the right direction and agree that Covington should be a part of this.
Thank you. Sean?
I just want to thank Claire, and I'm sorry I didn't get your name, but this is not a typical meeting, so.
Yeah, thank you for sticking around for you.
Blame Reagan.
Sorry.
Thank you for, yeah, sticking it out.
Anybody else? It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to continue funding Skip at the level of eleven thousand, four hundred and seven for the two thousand twenty-four funding cycle, as well as approve the work plan. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you again. Before we continue, Mark, I have a question for you. Our executive session this evening, approximately, how long do you feel that that will take?
That'll be a question for Ethan.
Ethan, how long will it take?
I'm hopeful fifteen minutes should be our time.
So looking at the rest of our, thank you, Ethan. Looking at the rest of our agenda, I am looking at Ethan, how long do you think item four will take?
Ten minutes, five minutes.
I'm going to request that we extend the meeting for forty-five minutes, and if we get done early, then we get done early. Is there a motion to approve the extension of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting for forty-five minutes. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unwillingly, aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll try and get it done sooner than forty-five. Thank you all. Okay, next up is new business item number four, consider authorizing the city manager to award and execute a contract with Road Art Construction for the SoCo Park Phase One Improvement Project CIP ten nineteen. And remember, council, as your question will extend it. Ethan, go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item, just a quick note, we're just continuing to use SoCo Park as part of this project name, because that's the name that started the game, the project, even though the park name has changed to Founder's Park. Changing all the documents related to the project seemed like an impossible task. So we'll continue to call it SoCo Park. It'll end up with a nice park sign that says Founder's Park, so. Just wanted to note that the SoCo Park Phase One Improvement Project includes trails, walkways, open lawn, landscaping, onsite parking, and new pedestrian crosswalk furnishings, lighting, and signage. This is the first phase of improvement, and a multi-phase approach toward completing all improvements in the park's master plan. We did a competitive bid process. We received seven sealed bids. The bids range from nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand to two point seven million dollars. And that's a total amount, including the base bid and both add, both add alternate options. The estimated project range was between nine hundred thousand and one point one million. And we did include the base bid summary as an attachment. Road Arti Construction Incorporated is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, assuming the contract is awarded for the base bid and both additive alternates. Awarding the base bid and both additive alternates is recommended for the following reasons. If not including additive alternate would mean no soft surface trail or natural plain nodes in the interior of the park. And not including additive alternate two would reduce the open space and lawn area by about half. Um, delivering more improvements now also provides more public benefit sooner than later. Uh, and if the additive alternates are not completed now, they will likely cost more in the future due to inflation and construction cost trends. Uh, however, to award the construction contract for the base bid and both additive alternates would require an additional hundred thousand dollars of funding to be allocated. This project for a reasonable project contingency budget line. Funding for this project has been provided by the city of Covington. Uh, and the grant administered by the Washington State Department of Commerce. Uh, available funding for construction allocated to this project is in the city's adopted budget in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-six thousand. This amount is sufficient, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven uh, dollars and fifteen cents. This amount is sufficient to cover the cost of awarding the contract for these base bids and both additive alternates. Uh, but it only leaves about eight thousand dollars uh, for a contingency line budget. So assuming construction contract is awarded for both base, the bid and that both additive alternates. An amount of a hundred thousand dollars is needed to provide the sufficient contingency funding for the project. That amount is available in the city's Parks Reserve Fund. Um, I could go on if the if the city wants to, there are other options, the the council could choose just to award the base bid. Um, and you wouldn't have to use any more of the Parks Reserve funding and we should have enough contingency funding. Other options would include awarding the base bid in either option or either base bid. Alternate one or two. Uh, going with either of those would require some additional contingency fund funding from the. Parks Reserve Fund. And there's even one scenario where you choose one of the base bid and additive alternates. It would result in a different contractor being awarded the bid. So we'd have to bring that back to you at a future council meeting. With that, any question?
Also, I have any questions for Ethan?
I mean, just one, one glaring one to you. How mobile, what is the spread between um? Nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and two point seven million. I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around.
I I will say the the, I think it was the the lowest four were actually grouped pretty well. Um, and there were a couple really high bids and I have no idea what they're thinking is sometimes I think contractors just choose a really high bid number in case nobody else bids. And it's their assurance policy that they can get it done right now.
Anybody else? Okay, council before us is the option to award the contract for the Snowco Park. SoCo, or I'm thinking snow, SoCo Park Phase One Improvements Project. Founder's Park and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Road Art Construction Incorporated. In the amount of nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. And approve a hundred thousand dollars of additional funding from the city's Parks Reserve Fund to be available for project contingencies. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Joe, seconded by Christina. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Let's build a park.
Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
I second that.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to award the contract to for the SoCo Park Phase One Improvements Project. And authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Road Art Construction Incorporated in the amount of nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. And approve one hundred thousand dollars of the additional funding from the city's Parks Reserve Fund to be available for park. Contingent, project contingency. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Right, any opposed? The uh, motion passes. Thank you. Next is consider a resolution to change. Age requirements for the Covington Youth Council. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm here as the staff liaison representative for the youth council. Um, as you recall, at the joint meeting in March with the youth council and the council, one of the topics that came up was. Um, trying to grow the youth council. And in that growth, looking at what are the barriers for those looking to apply to be on the youth council? So we took this back to our meeting with the youth council and they come up, they came up with four different items. The first is they want to lower the age from fifteen to fourteen. Um, lowering the age to fourteen to allow youth council members to join would allow ninth graders to join. So the high schools are ninth through twelfth grade. And it made sense for them to include ninth graders on the youth council. Um, and part of this change is they want to go to Matson and Cedar Heights at the end of the school year when the kids are in eighth grade about to graduate. And come into the high school to try to recruit the eighth graders to join the youth council. So that is part of the resolution and needs to be voted on. The other three items they came up with are part of the application and interview process and can be um, changed at a staff level. But we do want council's input on these items. So council recommends, um, we we pulled up the application and looked at it together. And on the application, um, it asked for three references. So the youth council recommends changing that to just one reference on the application. They also were intimidated by the word count on the essay portion of the application. So they they um, recommended just removing the word count altogether. And lastly, um, they all mentioned when they were interviewed by council, that was a little intimidating for them. And if they could have the questions that council's going to ask them ahead of time, then they feel like they could be more prepared for that interview. Is it?
Please tell us some new questions, Jill.
So, this is, I I'm not a fan of the changing of the references down to just one. Uh, these are students who I'm sure have more than one favorite teacher and more than one teacher that likes them. I I don't see how, I I could see lowering it to two. Cause I I believe getting to two teachers or two people members of the community. To give you a reference would be an easier thing to do. I understand three can be hard. I was talking with my sister about this and asking for three references is like, wow, which three friends actually like me? Um, so, but it's one of those that I I don't, I think changing it to two rather than one would be the right way to go. As for the word count. I would be scared to take that off because we could wind up with. Uh, people applying and giving us two sentences, one sentence being, hi, my name is, and then the second sentence being, I like helping people. Or something like that. So I think a word count is needed so that we can at least get to know them a little better before that. Because it it just gives us more of a reference to who they are besides those references from the community members that they may, or teachers that they may have given us. So I would be, I would be against removing the word count just for that because. I mean, we, yes, we don't do it for other commissions. But we're asking students and these students are asking, asking to serve or wanting to serve on the community. And it does count towards their community service hours as well. So I think that's, that's something we should be looking at. As far as giving them the questions beforehand, I kind of feel like we we want them to be raw and honest with us. And we understand that it can be intimidating sitting in that room with us. But if we give them that preparedness, that moment moment to prepare, I, we could wind up having them. Reading their answers to us. And so I would be. Be worried about that. Just my thought, I don't want us to be giving too, giving away too much when we want, want them to succeed. At a higher level, we want them to be successful. And that's the same thing I asked for from our other commissioners. We want you to be successful. So give us that raw and honest time.
Anybody else?
I would recommend instead of uh, age, just make it freshman. I personally was a thirteen-year-old freshman.
Okay.
No, they don't do that anymore. That's a good thing. Also, I agree with Joe, put it in the recording. Two references, um. I, two references, what's on the other applications. I don't have a problem removing the word count. Um, it's fine honestly with me if they put two sentences. It is, and I don't think our other commissions require any kind of essay. So it seems odd to me to put that extra onus on the council. Um, and I would prefer that they don't have interview questions ahead of time. I think it's amazing practice for them in a real life situation. That's my input. Thank you so much for pulling this together.
So I I would agree. I think that's a great idea to change the age limit, not to age, but to freshman. Um, I agree with two references versus one. And um, the word count also does not matter to me. I don't agree with pulling the um, or giving them the questions in advance because I think it's good. Um, experience for them. And, yeah, they're un, they're unprepared, but that's okay. And and I, it's disappointing to hear that we're intimidating. Maybe we can find a way to soften it up a little bit, but. Um, but I think it gives them an opportunity to think on their feet because they're, they're going to have to learn to do that in the real world. And they're going to be required to do that on this council, so.
I agree, um, to, we have a standard and I like our standard. It's pretty high, but it's not too high. Um, to ask for two references. Is achievable and maybe it challenges them a little bit, but that's. Part of. Going above and beyond and being bigger and better, which we want all our students to strive for. Um. Also agree with the freshman. I don't know about the word count, you guys. I'm totally on the fence about that because at the same time, I would put a range. I would agree to arrange. But completely eliminating that is like leaving one reference. So if if, even if the range is, say, one to two hundred or fifty to two hundred. I also don't want an essay or a book because I, I believe that some, some students compensate in that. Way as well. And you don't think that they could, the more the better. It's not the case. So I would be open to arrange and. Yeah, definitely. No, no questions in advance.
I I agree with Betty and Jennifer, um, freshman. Two references, I think Jill mentioned that, word count doesn't really matter many much. Um, and the questions I think we should probably. Uh, keep um, them so that they can become more prepared when they're, again, we're preparing for real life. But I think the bigger thing is, how can, I I would be curious to hear how the youth council felt coming after, out of it. Because even if they felt intimidated during the process, we almost.
I don't think you've ever rejected.
I know, that's right, right. And so, I mean, like, maybe that would be an opportunity for them to share that experience. Sharing that experience so that they can help people that are interested, other, other students that are interested in applying for the council. Maybe there can be a mentor or some such thing like this. Um, I mean. Our old past interviews are recorded. So, I mean, it's not like they couldn't figure it out if they want to. They can go and look at them and and even if we change it up a little bit. They can kind of get a feel for what it's like to go into one of those interviews, if that helps. Helps them see what it's like, but, I mean.
Uh, real quickly, uh, maybe they could suggest some additional questions or new questions that would be more. Appropriate now that they've gone through the process. And and just as a counter. Uh, the state of Washington shares their interview questions thirty minutes before interview with all applicants. Some businesses do that, so they they will share their their questions beforehand, so anyways.
All right, so um, I am in agreement with changing the age to freshman. It sounds like everybody is in agreement with that. Uh, youth council, it sounds like going down to two references instead of three. Uh, removing the word count, sounds like the majority, but, you know, I I saw the word count and I, I talked to my daughter and myself. And we looked at it as a challenge to, we have to cut it down to that many because. I have no problem writing five thousand-word essays, so. But I have no problem. Because it doesn't really matter how many words in an essay. It's what our conversation during the interview process. And that's how, and every, and so removing the word count is perfectly fine. That sounds like the majority of us want that or agree with that. Um, interview questions in advance. I, even though a couple of them have been nervous when they start. After the second question, because I always try to get it soft and there's been a couple of them that have been nervous on the second. But they all, every person I can think of. Even the young man that we just appointed to the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Committee. He didn't have the questions ahead of time and he is so endless during his um. Even though he had a different um, challenges. And um. I I I agree with not having the questions, but none of our clinicians have it ahead of time, but it helps them. Cause I remember when I used to interview at my business. Could have given them the questions and it wasn't. Some of, most of them, most of them aced it without a problem if there was, so. Um, so it sounds like. And I don't know if you want to take this back to. Youth council before we vote on it, but what it sounds like the council would like to do is lower the age to freshman. References, remove the word count and then not the questions in advance. So this. Council wished to vote on that?
So the only thing we need to vote on is the resolution because the other items aren't included.
Yeah, so just the freshman thing.
Mark's got a question.
Pardon?
Mark's got a question.
He can't, uh, he can't, it's not his turn. Yes, Mark.
Um, Mayor, what I'd suggest doing then is having a motion to strike in the resolution. Between the ages of fourteen and. And insert the words, shall be at least freshmen in high school and no more than eighteen years of age. At the time of the selection. So it's at, so it's basically saying, members shall be strike between. Through. Uh, the the parents fourteen and then add after the parents eighteen. Years of age at the time of selection. Just I want to make it clear for, so when the resolution is actually adjusted, that it's. Makes sense.
So, Mark, can you tell me what page you're on so I make sure I note this properly? Is this on?
Page one fifty.
One forty-six or one fifty-four?
Uh, one fifty of one fifty-four.
It is listed in two spots, okay? So on section four point two, member criteria. Changing this resolution to read youth council members shall be between, between freshmen of high school. And eighteen at the time of selection and reside or attend school within the city of Covington. Or a three-mile radius of the city of Covington city limits. Is that correct?
I think that's, that's just fine.
Okay.
So moved.
All right.
Request for clarification.
Okay.
Uh, can we say senior instead of eighteen? Because that's what the eight, that at the whole resolution, we recently changed it to be. Until they graduate. So if we put the eighteen in, it's the whole same situation.
Good point. So that would withdraw that and state that it would read. Four point two, member criteria, youth council members shall be freshmen of high school and senior of high school. At the time of selection and reside or attend school within the city of Covington or a three-mile radius of the city of Covington city limits. Does that cover it?
It does, thank you.
Go.
I'm good, so moved.
Okay, that's what we.
I, I thought those two were going to ask more questions. I was waiting.
No, they didn't put their hand up. Get it done. Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the proposed resolution in substantial form as changed. As that attached to change to the age requirement for the Covington Youth Council. Joe, speak to your motion.
Get some more people on the youth council.
Okay, Christina, speak to your second.
I just think it's a great idea. I'm glad we did this. We should have done this earlier.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right, been moved and seconded to approve the proposed. Resolution in substantial form as that just changed to change the age requirement for the Covington Youth Council. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you all very much. Jacqueline, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is item number six is to consider appointing a, an additional voting delegate. For the two thousand twenty-three Association of Washington Cities. For the two thousand twenty-three Association of Washington City's Annual Business Meeting. Chris, um, Debbie and I have already been appointed. Christina is now um, signed up to go to A W C. So there is a potential to make an emotion to appoint Christina as an additional voting delegate. Represent the city of Covington at the two thousand twenty-three Association of Washington City's Annual Business Meeting on next week, Thursday. And moved and seconded, favor state aye. Opposed? Thank you all very much. This concludes our new business. Um, future agenda items, our next meeting is on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh. Uh, so let's move into council staff comments. Start with Adam.
I have no comments.
Thank you. Ethan.
Uh, no comments from you either.
Thank you. Bob.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Selena.
I have a couple things. Sorry, I'll be really quick. Um. So I just wanted to give the council the heads up that we are starting our public engagement process for the comprehensive plan. We've talked about this at our joint meeting with planning commission. We just kicked off our stake, our targeted stakeholder meetings. And what those are is that we're reaching out to about twelve business organizations within Covington that serve populations that we have not. Historically brought into the planning process. So these are our hospitals, our youth, our services, um, food banks. I'll, I'll send you the list tomorrow. Um, Burke is going to be leading those interviews. So just wanted to give you an FYI of. Community folks reach out to you that this is something that's coming through the community development department. Um, as part of the comprehensive plan effort. And then also, um, we are doing a soft launch, kind of. Soft launch for the comprehensive plan kickoff at Covington Days. So we will be occupying part of the booth. We will be kicking off a survey, um, that our planning commission is working with staff on. And our planning commission members will also be in tune and volunteering at the booth this year. So we're super excited about that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you, Selena. Casey.
Just going to mention, um, if you remember back in February, I got to a resolution to write off the interest that has been. Outstanding or infertility fees. Um, they have paid all of their back. Fees, so they just need eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of back principal.
Thank you. Mark.
We have an executive session tonight to discuss real, potential real estate acquisition pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty. One, one, zero, sub one, sub little b, and I've no further report.
Thanks, Mark. Regan.
Everybody's dreading the executive session. Uh, just real quick, uh, last week we kicked off our, uh, budgeting, our budget planning for twenty twenty-four. So if there's any, uh, decision cards that the council is considering, please get with me in the next month or so. And we can, uh, work through those together.
Thanks, Regan. Krista.
Council typically cancels the second meeting in August. I would like to see if we have council consensus to do so. And that would be the August twenty-second meeting. Thank you.
Christina.
I know we flew through future agenda items, but I did want to see. Inquire whether there would be interest to potentially discuss in our future meeting, which will be really soon. If we wanted to still pull fifteen ninety. ASAP to be part of this year's funding. So if there's interest to discuss. Thank you, Joe. If there's interest to discuss.
Yep, I'm just going to suggest the same.
Putting it on the future agenda.
So I don't think we'll get it done by July twenty-first.
Because council created that policy that it has to go through the Human Service Commission, um. For a recommendation. And then, of course, the decision isn't with the commission, the decision is with the council. What, when is the next Human Service Commission? Okay, if it's next week, then they could potentially get that. We could bring it to you July eleven. On June twenty-seven?
Well.
She said July twenty-first.
Yep, and then they would, if we let them know by July twenty-first, they'd bring the resolution back to us.
So we, we, we can look at that. Um, we do collect about four hundred and fifty thousand a year. We have around maybe just over a million. Right now that we've collected fifteen ninety funds. Um, yeah, that's the sixty percent. The rest are used for Darren, but. Um, I, I think there's some things that, that we'll need to consider for that. I, I think it may change. You know, do we want to continue paying that membership fee? Because not all cities are contributing. Right now, there's only one that could be contributing that fifteen ninety. Uh, it, to them. And also, By Maple Place has also shown interest in requesting. Some fifteen ninety funds from the city and those would directly impact Covington.
So hence the discussion because we don't have to give all hundred percent of the sixty percent, just.
Oh, yeah, just bring it back to council to discuss it. And then send it to, well, no.
I, I think if there's interest to allocate those funds to skip, we ought to get it to the Human Service Commission ASAP. Um, otherwise, if we just bring it back to you to discuss on June twenty-seventh, there won't be time then for that turnaround.
There was consensus to send it to Human Service.
Okay.
If there's time.
If there's time, yeah.
So, so they meet June twenty-eight. So we'd have to bring it back to council July, but so that could work.
All right, Mark.
And just to note this, this will likely require a budget amendment if we're changing, uh, this appropriation for these funds during this year.
Can I, can I comment on that? They're not requiring a sign up. It, it is an expressed interest.
A commitment.
Alright, we're not dispersing, correct.
Right.
The commitment of, and by the like. So we, we made the consensus to bring it back to Human Services, then to bring it back to us. Okay, anything else, Christina?
We, we can do a budget.
We're meeting on Friday in person again.
Great discussion. Glad we're moving forward to executive session. Thanks, everybody.
Uh, there was no R F A meeting, um, so nothing to report there. We did have a district forty-seven town hall meeting. This was unbelievable as well. The room was packed. Also, talk to me afterward if you want to. Get a lowdown or, or bad, we'll vote there. Um, and then I don't want to lose the request or the suggestion from someone that, um. In the audience who mentioned that we should put together a, some type of committee, um. Uh, to look into the best facility from Covington. So. Um, I don't know what that would look like, but I'll do some more doodling on that. But I think we should probably put together something that. Represents the council's or the city's approach to this, um. Uh, facility because it's going to have impacts on our community. So, um, anyway, I just. Put that out there to, to consider.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Well, a, along that, I just want to say I'm really proud of our community. So many people came and they're, they're passionate, um, whether we. Individually agree, um, one way or the other, they came, um, to have their voices heard. So I, I appreciate that. Um, Bob, next Tuesday, I'm not going to be here to go, um, well, to attend the skateboard meeting. You would be able to be on that one. Thank you very much. I'm going to A W C next week, so. Um, and then last week I went to the Seattle King County Realtors Housing Issues Briefing. And, um, I, I won't go into all, they, they shared a lot of information, but one of the takeaways was that I had a chance afterwards to meet and speak with. Um, John Wilson, the King County Assessor, and he said that their computer system at the county. Has no way of taking a lot and divvying it up into four, six. Uh, and making them unique. Taxable lots. So he said, I said, so are you saying it's impossible or like nearly impossible? And he said, well, I'll say it's like nearly impossible. Yeah, I, it takes a lot of work to do just one event. So, um, he said that Microsoft is working with them to develop a new platform. They had another. Um, company that was developing it and they had to fire them, um, for, uh. For performance. And so he's hopeful that Microsoft can have something spun up within four years. So that's not very encouraging.
A reminder that I will not be here in person for the next council meeting. I will be poolside at the end of June and, um. Thank you, Jeff, for running that really well and helping keep our community members, um, on track. Really well done. We don't have a lot of experience with that and handle it really well.
Go. I just want to say that was a great pre-meeting we had today. I learned a lot and I also got a lot of sticker shock by how much debt we could take on. And I, I, I did write never next to that big number. So first one of you to get us a hundred and twelve million dollars in debt. Get the, uh, but.
Your name on it.
No, don't put my name on that. Uh, secondly, I think that we had a lot of good, uh, conversation today. I, I'm appreciative of King Fisher for coming and talking to us. I'm also appreciative of them, uh, listening to the people here and I'm sure we will hear from them again. I'm looking forward to our next steps with that. And I'm thankful for our community for coming together and being respectful and having good conversation. And with that, let's go to our executive session.
I agree. It was great to see the turnout. We had over two hundred people in here and then plus online. There was supposed to a hundred people online that were listening. Um. So it's great that our community cares and can speak. Uh, A W C next week, so, uh, great learning experiences. Um, I'll let Debbie and Christina bring back all the information. Uh, we had our tri-city meeting, um, which was. We had our tri-city meeting. I signed. Two hundred thank you cards. And talk about. That's for all of our coaches, our volunteers, our commission members. And to each of you, thank you. And I look at that, I hand sign and put a note in it. For me, that's therapy. Sign that and it's just great to see that. And with that, uh, we do have, uh, our second of two public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. And are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. Once called upon, um, you can unmute. And is there, there's nobody in the audience? Is there anybody online wishing to speak? Jameson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Sorry, I had to, uh, adjust my daughter off my chest. I, the South King County housing. Housing, I think it's a great and, uh, you know, normal pro, noble prospect. But you're paying local people's money to fund a project in Burian. And at no point did I hear a, anything within ten mile radius of Covington making it happen. Uh, bringing it more local. Um. I have to ask the question, why are we paying for something that is on the other side? Over somewhere away, you know, it's a thirty, forty minute drive to get over to Burian. How is that going to affect the people of Covington? I know eleven thousand dollars is not much, uh, when you're looking at big numbers, but it's still something. On the other note, uh, we did, I thank you for bringing up the committee to, potential committee to look into. Doing a, a non-bias study. I appreciate that. But are you guys willing to publicly issue a statement on what you think? Of this whole King Fisher thing as a council? And then I would like to end, uh. Is there a possibility of annexation? I know a lot of your guys' uh. Process and community creep has been to the east by that, uh, eighteen, but has there been anywhere for, further north? I would hate it because I'd be paying more taxes, but at this point I'm, uh, I'm kind of willing to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jameson. Is there anybody else wishing to address council this evening? All right, seeing nobody else raise their hand, uh, public comment period is over. Uh, we're going to go into executive session for. Fifteen minutes. Okay, so we're going, so we're going to extend the meeting another five minutes to ten fifty. Which we will have our executive session run till ten fifty. At which no further action will be taken once we get out of executive session. With that, uh, thank you all very much for being here. We'll go into executive session, fifteen minutes. Good evening. We've come out of executive session. It is now ten fifty. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.